Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, March 27, 2018, will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey is excused. Trustee Hyman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Item B is the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, Foster, Nancy, would you lead us in the pledge? Yeah?
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of all its inhabitants, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Foster. It's good to see you. Next up, we have Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I'd like to swap Items Seven and Eight just to reverse their order. So Eight would become Seven, and Seven would become Eight.
Additionally, Mr. Supervisor, we have just another amendment on the agenda. On Item Four, we left off the resolution number, and that's been added to the revised agenda.
Okay. Any other questions on the approval of the agenda? Need a motion to approve?
I move we approve the agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Hyman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All righty, thank you. Before we get to Item D, I do want to mention that tonight is, if all goes well, will be the first live broadcast meeting of a Board of Trustees meeting. So we are live. So some of you didn't get the time memo, but that's okay. But we're live, so we have to behave extra, extra more. Okay. Item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Any questions on that? Chair?
Yes. On the fire report, well, first, let's go with the building report. Page One of Twenty-Three, oh, we don't have anybody here for building, do we? So we'll let that go. I'll use an email on that. Fire, under, on the February 2018 report, Plymouth trans billed out $22,000 this month and received $5,800, and have $53,000 in outstanding bills and wrote off $6,500. For future, but first of all, I'd like to know why we're writing off, since we're a year past the new policy. And then second is, who, in addition to the fire chief, is tracking these receivables? Since, I guess we have quite a, $53,000 is quite a large number. So let's talk about that a little bit. Collection of receivables. So that $53,000 is all from prior to the change above board policy, March 15 of 2017? Say again? $53,000 is? That's all, that's all from prior to, and only falls off after so many days. So if somebody? All right. I, I think the, either the treasurer or the accounting people probably need to start tracking and watching and helping out on this to ensure, and also would you add a line item for emergency services? We, we pay MHR billing to manage this, and that's who manages it. We get that from them. But we're going to manage the contractor, then, because we get a commission. But anyway, what I'd like is you to add the emergency services recovery line for the future. Okay.
And that same report, I see Plymouth Township fire transported 25 percent this month. Very good job.
Okay. Any other questions on Item D?
One thing on the approval of the township bills. As I was going through the bills, two things popped out. Repairs on police and fire vehicles are still very, very expensive. We spent an awful lot fixing things. That, and we had 19 holes in the roof leak. So 19 holes in the membrane, so another $800 bill for the roof leak.
What roof? What building?
Here.
It's a metal roof.
But there's a membrane that goes around, and the ice broke the membrane in 19 holes. So they fixed that for $800, but something else we've got to keep an eye on, it looks like.
Why are we having police? We have almost every piece of equipment in the police department is brand-new, especially vehicles. What's going on? We have that drug forfeiture fund that just is replenishing the equipment in the fire depart, police department at a fantastic rate. So either that or your impression is not correct, that our bills for repair on vehicles is too large.
Obviously brakes and?
Yeah, but that's wear items, but?
But at $200, $300, $500 per vehicle, seems like a lot, but?
All right. We have a contract, we have a, with Blackwell Ford.
We take our cars to Blackwell Ford.
And we have an agreement there. I think at one time, they give us a, at one time, they used to give us a special labor rate.
Correct. That is still correct.
Still the case?
Yes. We replace half of our fleet every other year. So the vehicles, the 16-dash vehicles and the 17-dash vehicles are the ones that are out of warranty past the 36,000 miles, and that's where the costs are coming from.
Okay. Any other questions on Item D? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Hyman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Trustee Kermy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Item E is Public Comments and Questions. This is not your only opportunity during the evening to ask comments and questions. We have an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well, and we also encourage questions that are relevant to each individual agenda item when they appear. So if there are any comments or questions at this time, we'll be happy to entertain them. Yes, sir. When we, when you come up, especially because we are now live on TV, we just need your, your name and your address.
My name is Bob James. I live at 12897 Portsmouth Crossing in Plymouth Township. And you guys probably don't hear this enough, but I, as a resident and voter, want to let you know that I thoroughly appreciate everything that you, as a group, are doing to bring transparency and honesty to our township government. I know you don't, probably don't hear that enough, but you ought to know that. And, secondly, I am really sorry to hear or to see all of the stuff that's going on by some people who lost their jobs in the last election, who have nothing better to do, apparently, with their time than to sow rumor, lies, dissent, innuendo, robo-calls, as I'm sure a number of people here are getting, that do nothing but really cause dissension and impede your efforts to provide us with a clear and honest government. So thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts, and shame on all the deplorables, if you will.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah?
I may not be here till the very end, so I may, wanted to talk a little bit about PARC in case I have to leave. I just, I hope that it will go to a vote to the people. Let the people decide. I, I know people are saying, "Well, money, money," but we all pay for things in a community that we don't use. I mean, we used to use McLumpla Park regularly when my children were small. They're all grown now. We don't use McLumpla Park like we used to. We still pay for it. We pay for the schools. I have no children in school. You know, you pay for a lot of things, and I think PARC has a lot to offer this community. The building means something to a lot of people. It would cost a lot of money to tear it down. It would cost a lot of money to redevelop that land. And if the people are upset about an 800, you know, parking area, just imagine if that was developed into homes, the traffic that they would have to put up with every day. And I just, more shops, I don't think that would be a good thing for our community. I just, I, I like what PARC is doing. They brought in the art college from downtown Detroit to give classes. The pool is very well-used and needed. The high schools only have two pools for three sports, and the middle schoolers have swim practice also. So the pool is very well-utilized for many things. So I, I just think PARC is doing a good thing, and the small amount of money that we might have to come up with would be a benefit to the whole community, even if you didn't, you know, utilize it on a regular basis. I think it would enhance our community, and I hope that we get a chance to vote on it in November.
Any other questions or comments at this time? I do want to say, too, that we, we are, despite what the robo-calls may have said, we are not voting on anything tonight regarding park. We are just going to have a brief update on it towards the end of the meeting. You're certainly welcome to stick around, but this is not going to be a, some decisive evening of, of votes on the future of park. There's a lot of work that has to be done over the next several weeks. And when that vote, if that vote does happen, it will happen in a public meeting. It will be properly noticed. We will advertise it on, on our website and on Facebook, as we always do, and you'll certainly have an opportunity to, to participate in that process. Okay. Let's move on to Item One, Storm Drain Agreement for DD Helm. Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This storm drain agreement is for Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center. As you may recall from previous storm drain agreements, Wayne County requires the township to take jurisdiction over the stormwater system. This agreement and resolution passes that responsibility over to the property owner. This is for Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center over on Helm Road in Jib. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Has it been reviewed by the attorney?
Yes.
All right. Hearing, any questions from the public on this one? Hearing no other questions, I need a motion.
Here it goes. Move to adopt Resolution 2018-3-27-8, authorizing the township supervisor to sign the Wayne County Permit M-48693 and approve the storm drain agreement with DD Helm LLC, and authorize the township supervisor and clerk to execute same.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Hyman?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is Item F2. This is a amendment review and discussion regarding our Planned Unit Development, or PUD, ordinance. Ms. Haw.
Thank you, Supervisor Heisey. Laura Haw, Planning Director for Plymouth Township. As we've discussed before, the Planned Unit Development Ordinance is part of the township's adopted zoning ordinance, and this ordinance provides for a more flexible development approach that often entails more creative use of the land for a higher-quality end product. And this ordinance has been updated over the past several months, working with the Planning Commission, and it's before you tonight for discussion. The memo that's provided in your packet identifies the significant updates to the ordinance, and those are listed on Pages Two, Three, and Four of your ordinance, of your memo, excuse me. So for instance, one of the significant changes is that currently, a five-acre parcel is required to be considered eligible for the PUD process. We're reducing that to one acre. That's in line with best practices and fits the township's landscape as the sites that we're going to be seeing for redevelopment are smaller infill sites. There's language that safeguards the township and requires more of that community benefit as part of the process. So for instance, one of the requirements now is for the PUD to show a recognizable and material benefit to the users of the PUD. Adjacent property review is also required as part of the process. There's a number of clarifications that really just reduce redundancies and vagueness, such as within a reasonable time. That language has been eliminated, and the exact number and duration of time limits has been provided for. And then, maybe most importantly, there are a number of standards now in the PUD ordinance that provide for circulation and interconnectivity, environmental considerations, non-motorized pathways, traffic safety, and calming. And these are really to protect the interests of the township moving forward. So the PUD ordinance has been reviewed by the Planning Commission at several meetings. There were two public hearings held in December and January of last year and this year, and at the Planning Commission meeting last week, the Planning Commission recommended consideration by the Board of Trustees for this article. We haven't received any new comments from the public since that time, so the point of tonight is just to have a discussion. If there's any questions or comments, I'll take those back, and then the goal would be to have this on another regular Board of Trustees meeting. I'll do a report back if there's any changes, and at that point, since it is a zoning ordinance tax amendment, it just requires one reading for board approval. Thank you.
And that is because? And we only require the one reading because the Planning Commission has already essentially done the first reading or the first analysis?
Correct.
Okay.
They've held the public hearings, and this is separate in the general code of ordinances.
No publication rules required?
The?
Before it takes effect?
The Planning Commission has followed those.
So it's already been published?
Correct. Twice.
Laura, do you know how many approximately five-acre plots are still available in the township?
Well, there's definitely more as you move further west, especially along Napier, but those are mostly residential lots. And when we think of PUDs, it's either going to be a mixed-use commercial and residential, or a mix of commercial and office. So those are sites that we're really looking at along the Ann Arbor Road corridor, or in some of our industrial districts. So there are still five-acre parcels, but not likely to be developed for this scenario.
And they could be brownfield, too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. How many pending applications do you have that this will apply to right now, that developers have either paid the fee or showed you a conceptual drawing?
Right now, we have one PUD that's in the works. That is the Beck Road Hotel PUD option, and that option was granted last year in June 2017, and the applicant had just submitted for tentative site plan review in January. So they're working through that process. But these standards, it wouldn't hinder that development going forward.
So there is no one, that went under the old rules?
Correct.
So there's no one waiting for this right now?
Correct.
All right. Good.
The hotel that, that was contemplated for 275 in Ann Arbor Road would have benefited from this, from these changes, and we meet right now probably at least once a week with developers who are looking to do high-end condos, apartments, other sites that would be very specific to a, a suitable area where this, where this ordinance would, would be very helpful.
Well, and then, sorry, the, the, these seven on the screen, sorry, I was scrolling, making everyone seasick. I lost my place. These are the seven that are currently in existence, and at least three of these have not moved forward, right? Number Three, is that moving forward, the Plymouth Town Square?
Well, the Plymouth Town Square is a PUD, but it's also governed by consent judgment.
Yeah.
So that, that has largely been developed. That includes, like, the fitness and?
Right, right. Okay. I was thinking of the, the parcel by the railroad tracks. Plymouth Marketplace, number Seven, what's the status of that?
Right now, the, that's the existing Kmart site. Right now, the developers are looking at a variety of options. As we know, big-box retail is going through a transition right now, and they're looking at other options other than traditional retail. They are still committed to the two outbuildings along Ann Arbor Road, which this board agreed to in, in late 2016, and then they're looking, they're still hoping for some retailers in the old Kmart building, but I believe they are now looking at some other options, which might include a, a mixed-use with townhouses and smaller retail operations.
Townhouses on Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty?
We have them on Ann Arbor Road in, right now.
Yeah, but that was essentially a failed development. It was cut short, the one farther west.
Well, it's, it's occupied, to my knowledge, so, anyway.
They substantially changed the design. They, they were going to build more units, and because it was a, so I'd be a little concerned about residential on Ann Arbor Road.
I know in the last? Well, we don't have a proposal in front of us, right?
No.
Exactly. In the, in the last week, I've talked to nine realtors and business people that are very interested in what we consider here because of that lowering the, the acreage limit, and it makes Plymouth Township a lot more exciting place to be based on that, and gives them a lot more options. Sounded really good.
One other item. What provisions have you taken on protecting existing developments where they're residential for this kind of a development?
That's a great question, and something that the Planning Commission was concerned about. So previously, the standards for the screening and buffering weren't very specific and didn't give the Planning Commission a lot of latitude in addressing that. So as part of this, it specifically provides some provisions to that and explicitly says residential uses, not just an adjacent property along the right-of-way, with the similar language, type of language that I had before.
So for example, it's specifying what type of buffering is required?
It's, it does require a landscaping or allows for a further setback when there are adjacent residential uses, not just when it's fronting the right-of-way, the front of the street.
How many public comments did you receive in the two hearings?
The only written comments that we received were from a resident south of Ann Arbor Road and east of 275. I believe that was the only public comment.
Was that the resident who was specifically concerned about the hotel?
Correct.
Yeah.
About which hotel?
The?
The new one down over here.
Oh, the new proposed that is gone for now?
Yes, for now.
Yes, but they did have feedback for this, that, calling attention, to your point, trustee, that residential uses can be significantly impacted.
All right. Hotels, remember, they give a workout to the police department occasionally, so if you have too many of them?
Well, not if they're nice hotels.
You'll be busy. It doesn't matter. You have transient people and issues in hotels.
Not in a Marriott. You don't have transient people in a Marriott.
No, their businessmen are transient people. That are, they're?
All right. All righty. Any other questions for Ms. Haw at this time, by the board?
Nice job with this, Laura. You really, I mean, really tightened it up.
Thank you. The Planning Commission worked a while on it.
And Bob, you were on the Planning Commission, so thank you, too, for your time on this.
It's a really good?
You're our highs and ears, so appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the public? All righty. I don't believe this requires any action on our part, so we will revisit this probably at the April 10 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is Item Three. This is the Trash, Recycle, and Yard Waste Contract for Township Properties. Sarah?
Good evening. Sarah Vissel, Solid Waste Coordinator. So in January, the township advertised for bids for the trash recycle and yard waste collection at our township facilities. Three bids were received on February 20. We solicited bids for the same services that we currently have. So the first spreadsheet is a bid tabulation, and it shows the monthly costs as they were submitted. Advanced Disposal submitted their bid for the exact same services as we currently have, and that includes the yard waste, which we currently have a four-yard dumpster and it's collected three times a week for eight months, for a eight-month period.
All right. Just let me know if you want me to zoom in on some.
It's a little small, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. And then GFL and Republic each submitted a bid, and all the services were the same. They were all equal, except for the yard waste collection at Township Park. And that's where a difference kind of comes in. So they submitted an alternate bid, which they replaced the four-yard dumpster with a 10-yard dumpster, and the collection would be as needed. So, Republic also had a disposal fee associated with that, $25 for the first year per ton. Then it went up to $28 for the second year. GFL was not charging a tonnage fee. So the second spreadsheet, which is the annual cost analysis, what we did there is, it's based on a couple of educated assumptions by myself and Park Foreman. So when determining the total cost per year, with the alternate bids for the yard waste, we had to put in there what we thought would be the collection. So we assumed a once-a-month collection for the 10-yard dumpster. Okay? So Advanced Disposal's pretty straightforward. They're just, they're going to collect it three times a week, like current. But GFL and Republic, we had to kind of base it on assumptions. Okay?
Three times a week? That seems like a lot for yard waste. Does it include the waste from Hilltop Golf Course?
Hilltop does not have, Hilltop has, yeah.
It does?
So it includes the yard waste from Plymouth Township Park, if there's any over at Lake Point, everything that's taken to Township Park for yard waste.
So are we allocating a charge to Hilltop for this?
Um, not for yard waste.
Probably not. All right. But Hilltop, my judgment?
They get charged, they get charged only for the, their trash and recycle.
I predict Hilltop is the largest user.
Um?
It's the largest piece of property.
The Park Foreman would probably, yeah, but the Park Foreman, all they do is pick up sticks out there at that Township Park. Who'd tell you they spend a lot of time picking it up? But, um, so, yeah. So are there any questions about that, how that was figured?
I have more of a procedural question on what, what do we do next? If you want to, this might be more for the attorney. If we are going to award a bid tonight, then we still have to execute, do we have to execute an additional contract at a later point? Kevin?
Was there, usually when a request for proposals is put out, that includes a proposed contract? If that, if that happened in this case, that contract would be part of the bid documents?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Then we'll need a contract.
Okay. So that can come back to us on April 10, okay?
Okay.
We, we're going to have to get, we don't have to, but it'd be nice to get that turned around in time.
So, but, so based on that, and then we have some on calls once in a while. Have we, I, I've never had an on-call on any of our township facilities, other than Lake Point Soccer Park and the Township Park. So? So, because you'll see that Advanced Disposal does have kind of a higher on-call rate, but they still come out the lowest bid.
Do you have a storm rate here? If we have a major event that creates a lot of debris on the facilities, do you have a fee for that, which will be additional that they would charge?
It would be an on-call if we had to talk about it.
An on-call and that's agreed?
To pick up, to collect, right, yes.
So what did we do for the last six months after the old contract expired?
They, GFL has been providing the service on a month-to-month basis. So we had to...
This was originally...
...that we would extend them...
This was originally part of the original contract with Rizzo. And when GFL took over from Rizzo, it was their opinion that this was part of the original waste hauling contract, which was to be automatically continued. Sarah brought this to my attention. I was not convinced legally that we were obligated to continue this additional service with GFL, formerly Rizzo. We had the attorney look at our contract with GFL and he determined that it was not necessary for us to stick with GFL to continue this particular service. So I don't know if it was just a matter of contract interpretation or some kind of understanding that they had with the previous administration, that Rizzo had with the previous administration, but we were not obligated to continue this particular dumpster service.
What was the price that we were paying?
Who is GFL again? Sorry, Chuck.
The new company.
The new guys. Green for life.
Residential haulers.
They are our current residential haulers.
Currently, we pay about $10,780.
Per year?
Annually.
So why would we change it? If we're going to double it, why don't we stay with it at GFL?
Well, no, no, we're not doubling it.
I'm confused. We're going to $18,000 from $10,000.
That's for the whole contract, for a two-year period.
All right, so comparing, making a direct comparison of what GFL is charging us today under the gentleman's agreement or whatever it was, continuation of the contract, what was the cost per year? I'm trying to get at...
Currently, it's $10,780.
All right.
That we pay a year.
And there was going to be an automatic escalation?
There's an escalation, yes, as we move forward in the...
So how much will be the savings per year if we go with...
Well, Advanced Disposal, their annual is $93.45.
Pardon?
$93.45, that's what they quoted us.
So $1,400 savings per year as opposed to doubling it for GFL.
Well, GFL's annual for the bid that they just submitted is like $12,530.
And if we had stayed with GFL, their rates were going to go, were going to continue going upwards for the duration of the seven-year contract that we have with them. So I believe we...
That's written down somewhere?
So we went out for a two-year contract. We were looking for another two-year. That's what our previous contract was, for two years.
I'm trying to better understand the existing contract that ended in October.
It was a two-year contract, so...
All right, and now they've asked for, if we hadn't bid this out, they had an automatic cost increase of how much?
They did have a cost increase.
How much?
On an extension. Um, I can't quote, yeah, sorry, I don't know exactly.
What I'm trying to get at is, is this a good value for the money or is it just we want somebody else? That's what I want to be sure of.
It's good value for the money.
Good value for the money is important.
Okay, any other questions from the Board?
Good job, Sarah.
Any questions from the audience on this one? All righty, need a motion.
We got to wait for a contract?
No, well, we have to, don't we want to accept the...
Make it contingent upon the signing of a contract.
Let me do, I'll do it. I move to accept the low bid for Plymouth Township Facilities Trash, Recycle and Yard Waste Collection as submitted by Advanced Disposal Services on February 20th, 2018, Resolution 2018-03-27-09, contingent upon approval by the Board of Trustees of a service agreement.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made by Supervisor Seton and by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item four is engineering, and thank you, Sarah, engineering and design services contract. We do have a motion on this one as well, a resolution number. So this will be Mr. Felrath and Mr. Richmond, but we'll start with Patrick.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and members of the Board. So this item, if you recall during budget discussions, water and sewer budget discussions, I brought up the need to update the township's engineering design standards. As you likely know, the engineering design standards govern the design and construction of all the infrastructure within the township, namely the water main, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewers, and they play a key role under planning. All site plan reviews are reviewed and approved per the engineering design standards. So these engineering design standards, they're outdated. They haven't been updated in 10 years. They still cite materials that are no longer available. Means and methods of construction have changed in 10 years. Best management practices have changed, along with Wayne County and MDEQ state permit requirements have changed. So there needs to be some alignment of requirements to match today's standards. So that's what's brought forth to you. I've asked Dave Richmond, our Township Engineer, who is the lead in all our planning projects, to submit a proposal to help to assist the DPW in updating our design standards. And this is something Dave and I have talked throughout the years, the need to do. We just didn't have a good time to do it, but I think it reached its, the time now is right. And Dave's proposal, Spalding D. Decker Associates, our Township Engineer, submitted that proposal and it's, the assistance is provided on an hourly basis, so they will charge us as needed as we move along, to meet with us and to review some standards and to do some research and update them. It's an hourly basis proposal, so my intent is not to reach that maximum value, but it is not to exceed $18,250.
What's the hourly rate?
I'm sorry?
What's the hourly rate?
Let's see, does it specify?
Is that in here?
Mr. Richmond?
Not in the letter.
It's not in with this proposal, it was in with our general proposal, I think, when we were selected as Township Engineer.
Correct.
And it's based off of billing categories. Say, project manager, senior project engineer, and a construction manager is what we'll be looking at. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I don't remember exactly what we put in the proposal, but in general, it would probably average out to about, I think about $100 an hour is what it averages out to.
Where are the other quotes from the two other engineering companies we use?
Well, again, we, since Mr. Richmond, SDA's, our planning engineer and have day-to-day experience with our township standards and review all our site plans and our planning, I specifically asked them, and we have a contract with them already, I thought they would be the most appropriate to assist in this, in this effort. So I did not ask for proposals from the other engineers. If you recall, we have a list of qualified engineers, but we generally go to each one according to the type of project. You know, for example, if we do pavement or roads, we tend to go to the one that's provided some road and pavement experience throughout the years. And we tend to use those engineers that we have good experience with on specific projects. So, you know, SDA, our Township Engineer, works closely with Laura on the site plans, and that's what they use to review and approve all planning. So it was...
So they're basically updating the standards that they use every day anyway?
Correct, yes.
One of the advantages too is our inspectors are working with DPW on a regular basis when we're out there inspecting projects that are being built, so we have a good understanding of what DPW is looking for, DPS is looking for, along with what the new construction standards are today.
Most of these standards are sewer and water related?
Yes, they are.
All right. Nothing to do with planning?
There's some new testing requirements for sanitary sewer and for water main. We need to update those testing requirements as far as how long they have to hold pressures. Patrick alluded to the fact that there's some material that's no longer used, such as ABS trust pipe, that's not manufactured anymore. And that's what, for sanitary sewer, that's one of the main, that's what the ordinance or the engineering standards show. So there's a lot of information like that that needs to be updated, along with the actual permits for MDEQ and actually, we don't longer submit sanitary sewer permits to Wayne County. Now they're going to go to YCUA for approval. So there's some information, some procedures like that in the engineering standards that need to be updated as well.
Will you be able to have economies of scale or economies? Because why, Western Township Utilities Association may have already done their standards and they're the same standards, right?
Correct.
So we could copy?
A lot of the standards, there's just, it's just going to be, matter of fact, going through the standards and just double checking to make sure that the testing procedures are meeting the minimum requirements of MDEQ. And then, just updating some of the detail sheets. I don't think there's a lot that needs to be updated to them, but it's just, if we do make some changes, we may have to make some changes to the notes on the detail sheets. So it's just going to be a matter of going through and making sure we update it and we have to cross-check with YCUA, we have to cross-check with the MDEQ and just make sure that we're meeting all those as well.
I'm just thinking, maybe, a lot of this has already been done by Northfield Canton and Western Townships, so it should, maybe there'll be a substantial reduction.
Right.
If you get all those out and check them, so you don't have to start from scratch.
And this could be something that we can move through relatively quickly, or there's also, you know, the possibility that we run into an issue trying to find out information. I, my, to be honest with you, I expect this to go relatively smoothly. We just need to go through and update a lot of materials and some of the testing specifications.
Dave, besides providing residents with updated standards and obviously better processes, is there any, based on Chuck's question, anything that we could expect for saving in material costs, any savings, extra return on investment that might come as part of this?
It just saves, it saves in the long run, I think, with, when we are out on a construction site and we start running into issues, if we have a lot of this information already defined, it saves time from a standpoint of having our inspectors, our construction manager involved with it. It saves time for us when we're doing engineering reviews, if we're not having to constantly call up and coordinate with Patrick or Dan Hayman to make sure that this is something that's going to work. So yes, it would show a savings because it's, it's moving more, it gives us a chance to just look at what's required and check the plans.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I need a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-03-27-11, authorizing the attached proposal from Spalding D. Decker Associates, Inc., to update the township's engineering design standards for an amount not to exceed $18,250.
And isn't there a resolution number attached?
Oh, the new one, sorry. I move to approve Resolution 2018-03-27-11, authorizing the attached... Give me the same one. The same one.
Well, the resolution's at the end.
Sounds vaguely familiar.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm old.
Well, he read the right one.
The resolution number.
That's the right one.
Resolution number appears at the end.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Well, has it been read?
Yes.
Oh, was there a resolution number that he read as well? Okay, good. So the motion's been made by Trustee Heitman.
Remember, we're on TV now.
We are, we're live. This is coast to coast, yeah, in color.
And there's a big dog at my home.
In color. So motions made by Trustee Heitman, seconded by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F5 is the Recreation Master Plan Draft Approval and Setting of a 30-Day Public Review and Comment Period. I have in my hands, because we're on live TV, this is a visual, so I have in my hands the draft of the Joint Plymouth City and Township Parks and Recreation Master Plan for 2018 through 2022. This is the draft that is the work of our consultant, Leah Groya, and both my office and also Steve Anderson from the Plymouth of City Recreation Department. We're sort of the three people who have been gathering information, mostly Leah, and Leah has come, gathered all of that information into the Joint Recreation Master Plan that you see before you. This is a result of the public meetings that have been held, the surveys and questionnaires that have been out there, and input from the administrations of both the Township and the city. What we're doing tonight is, it's a combined motion that does two things. We're going to approve the draft Joint Recreation Master Plan and release the draft for public review and comment for a period of 30 days commencing April 5th, 2018, and ending May 5th, 2018. So copies of this master plan, hard copies, will be available at the Clerk's Office for people to come in and look at. If you have any questions or comments, we're going to leave business, my business cards with you, Jerry, so that people can either, you know, come upstairs and grab me directly or email me or call us with any comments or questions that you may have regarding the Joint Recreation Master Plan. That also applies to trustees as well. I don't think we want to go through this thing page by page tonight and fly speck it, but I've looked at it several times. I've been through a lot of the grids and the asks that appear in here. Again, it's a draft document and there may be items in there that you may want to change. You've got 30 days to do that, basically. So reach out to myself or Leah if you have any proposed comments or changes. I think that pretty much summarizes it, right?
Pretty much in a nutshell, yeah. I mean, I just wanted to give a little bit of information. My name's Steve Anderson, I'm the Recreation Director for the City of Plymouth. This is Leah Groya, she's the Principal Consultant from Living Lab. And for those who didn't know, she's a homegrown product. She grew up on Governor Bradford and graduated from the park, so she's very, knows the township very well. We're starting to come down to the stretch on this plan. The following is remaining timeline for the Recreation Master Plan. Obviously, today, receiving the blessing from the Board to begin the public review process on April 5th. If the Board had any comments this evening, you could weigh in on those if you wanted to, however, you'll still get a shot at it at the final public hearing. April 5th, we'll be posting, the City and the Township will be posting a 30-day public notice as required by the DNR and the Plymouth Observer. May 5th will be the end of the 30-day public review and we'd like to come back to you people at May 8th.
May 8th.
On, for the final public hearing, any public comment, and then we would like to request from the Board approval of the Recreation Master Plan by resolution. After that's completed, then Living Lab will start submitting to the State DNR, Wayne County, and some cops.
Okay. You know, one thing I was thinking of just while you were talking is, we still have two regular Board meetings between now and May 8th, so if we wanted to, we could also bring this back just... So, if we wanted to, we could also bring this back just for future discussion amongst ourselves. And, you know, we can, we can take notes and get those back to you as well. Because we do meet on April 10th and on the 24th.
So, I, I think that'd be a good idea. I, you know, given the fact that it's new, I have read through it. I, as most of you know, I've been on the board for going on 14 years. I've never seen one this good, both in terms of content and quality. So, well done. That's really good. And I encourage everybody to read it.
Steve, where does this stand with the city? Have they already approved the draft?
Their next meeting's April 2nd, Monday. So, I'll be going to them, do the exact same process. And then, the way the timeline actually falls out, the first Monday of the month is May 7th. The second Tuesday of the month is May 8th. So, it's going to be bang, bang between the city and the township.
And our goal, remember, you may recall, was to have this done by May 1st. But, obviously, with the meeting schedule being what it is, we're shy by, by a few days. Chuck?
Several questions. What's the date of the next grant cycle for the DNR or?
Department of Natural Resources Grant Cycle is an April 1st annual grant cycle.
So, we miss it for this year?
Correct.
So, that's what I mean. Well, the next one is April 1 of 2019?
Correct.
Alright, now I have a couple of other...
But, but that doesn't, what about the Natural Resources Trust Fund and other, other public agency grants that might be available?
The Natural Resources Trust Fund, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, Recreation Passport, those funds that are administered by the Department of Natural Resources are all on an April 1st cycle, annual. But, as Supervisor, Supervisor Heisey alluded to, there are other potential funding options. There's a newer one that's come out in the last year or so, the Ralph Wilson Foundation that's begun here in the Metro Detroit area and Buffalo, New York area. And they have money set aside for improvement of access in the Metro Detroit area. And they have, in the last six to nine months, been funding some public recreation projects. So, I think it's something to keep an eye on. They have just an open call because they're a private foundation. So, some of the funding agencies differ. We did follow the Department of Natural Resources process in terms of their requirements to develop a plan, in terms of content and, and process requirements. So, that you as a township, if you decide to submit a grant application to the Department of Natural Resources next April, that you'll be an eligible entity. You have to have a five-year plan completed and adopted by the board and in their hands in order to even be eligible to apply. So, it's kind of a first, a first step to, to get that eligibility to submit a grant application in the future.
I have a couple of suggestions. We should put a copy of this at the public library uptown. We should publish it, the period in the E, next E news, and put it on our website. Actually, can we PDF it on the website?
Yes.
I would recommend it. Yeah.
Actually, if you, if you go online to our agenda for tonight, it's on there right now. But, we can, we can make it more...
A typical person won't find the agenda, the packet very easily.
We can make it, we certainly plan on making it more user friendly and we can have a direct link to it. In color.
And then, I have one more thing for you specifically, Steve. Has there been any movement? Are you going to manage the turf on our Lake Point Soccer Club, not club, field to avoid the overuse and packing down of the...
We have been talking between the supervisor and Mrs. Bissel regarding where to go with that. Initially, we kind of want to put this to bed, but there are some things we can be doing to ramp up to the next soccer year. We're in the middle of the soccer year. So, to change something dramatically on any of the user groups now, they have to have time to restructure their fees, you know, their fees to their users. So, we're kind of in this limbo period. The next soccer, soccer year starts April, or I'm sorry, August 1st. So, we've got a little policy time that we can work with administration. But, we're interested in definitely working with it because it only benefits everybody.
Oh, I didn't know we were, that was part of the roadblock. I thought we could start up in the spring.
Spring is the back half of a soccer year. So, fall starts a whole new budget cycle for the private groups.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? From the public? Need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the joint, the draft Joint Recreation Master Plan and release the draft for public review and comment for the period of 30 days commencing April 5th, 2018 and ending in May 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Trustee Heitman was worried that he had heard the robo-call where he thought that there was going to be a massive hidden tax increase in this as part of my diabolical plot. So, anyway, don't believe everything you read, you hear, Gary. Alright, thank you, guys. Item 6 is solid waste budget review with Cindy.
Cindy, would you give your name?
Is this one working? Okay, in your packets, you will have a 2008 budget, request for the solid waste fund. This is an enterprise fund by nature, so it is not required to have a budget adopted by December as our general fund was. But, in light of some of the things that are going on in the fund, it's important to have a budget. And we had planned on doing this shortly after the new year. And then, the big slip and fall happened. And so, I've just been able to meet with Patrick over the last couple of weeks and come up with what we think is a good budget for that, that plan. So, in addition to going through the items in the budget, if you look at the very last line, the concern there is the ending fund balance.
Where, where are you looking at?
Second page.
Second page, last line.
$2,900.
Yes. So, if, if you look at the second column, which is the 2016 activity, we ended up with a, with a fund balance of $193,169. If I carry that over to the beginning of 2017 and then subtract what we expect to go on in the fund by the time the audit's done at 12, for 12/31/17, we're going to whittle that fund balance down to $109,000 by the end of this year, or 2017. So, then, if you look at the next column with what we project as revenue and expenses, you'll see that expenses are going to exceed revenue by $107,000. Therefore, it's going to eat into the fund balance of $109,000 and leave us with $2,900. And that isn't necessarily a very safe place to be in case there are emergencies, down trees, things like that. So, Patrick and I sat down and we went through the budget items line by line and came up with a $1.56 million budget. But, the problem is we only have about $1.4 million in projected revenues, which is what generates the shortfall. So, what I wanted to do on the next, the next handout is kind of explain to you why that's happening. And if you look at the very first box, section 1, cost of solid waste services, the amount on the extreme left is the budgeted amount. Then, we have the average numbers of households that we serve. We came up with a cost per household and divided that by 12 and came up to a cost per month.
Is that 13.03? Or what, where are you on the page up there?
I'm on the 14.27.
Okay, so you summed up that.
That's the cost.
That's the cost per month.
Sarah Viesel's salary is in department operations?
What Sarah Viesel's salary is... What happens is Sarah not only works in solid waste, she also is our block grant administrator. She is the park pavilion registration person. And she also deals with stormwater. So, instead of having all of her salary charged to solid waste, it's allocated to those three other departments. So, those three other departments then have to pay the water and sewer for that amount of money. Because water and sewer is expending it all and she's really working for three other departments. So, that's what that is.
And Patrick, some of Patrick's salary is in that 68, 8, 14?
Patrick's salary is also allocated in the intergovernmental line item, intergovernmental service, about 15%, 10, 15% in 2017.
So, which line is that?
Which line?
On there. Is it department operations? Is where it's allocated to?
Yes. So, okay, so what, what this is trying to illustrate is if you look at all the categories of costs, if you summarize them, there's the actual solid waste disposal, which pretty much is what we pay to GFL, is the biggest chunk of that budget of 1.3 million. Then, we have, every year, we seem to have some kind of emergency that requires pickup. So, that's 7,000. Department operations would be Sarah, Patrick, the phone, legal, any of the other type of expenses dealing with running their department. And then, highlighted in yellow is something I was calling auxiliary services. Because that seems to be where the biggest cost issue is in this whole thing. So, the box below that defines what I would consider auxiliary services. So, household hazardous waste is the biggest one. We have a recycling center at Port Street.
Cindy, your mic just went dead, so just...
This is gone? Oh, okay. Okay. So, the auxiliary services are all the things that we do in that fund except collect the trash. And so, we analyzed those services and of the $1.47 million budget, $53,200 of it are those extra services. So, if you divide that by the households and divide that by the months, that comes up to 51 cents per month that we are paying for things that we are not getting any revenue for. So, a decision has to be made with this.
And the bulk of that is what? Household hazardous waste day?
Yeah, household hazardous waste is about $41,000 a year.
Forty-one?
It's 35 to 40 dollars a car.
Yep.
And I'll have some things to say about that in a bit.
So, so if you look at this analysis, the 1427, which, I don't know why that didn't show up in color. It was in green so that you would be able to see it. But, anyway...
Which item?
It's right there.
At the very bottom.
It's green in our packet.
Right. Okay, it is green in your packet. Okay. So, that is the cost of doing everything in that fund, collecting the trash and then these extra services. So, the problem is if you look right next to the 1427, you'll see that we only bill $13.25 per month. So, you have this structural shortfall in the fund of about $105,000, $106,000 a year. So, what you need to address, or the board needs to address, is how those services are going to be covered. Either you can raise the rates to cover those, you could eliminate those, you can start charging for those separately. But, the problem is just structurally, we're spending $14.27 and we're collecting $13.25. So, the next problem goes to section 2. So, in addition to covering that $14.27 worth of costs, your fund balance pretty much now is at zero. So, what section 2 does is looks at how much it would cost per month per household to start increasing the fund balance. And we did it in increments of $25,000. So, if you, if we wanted to start increasing our fund balance by $25,000, it's going to, it's going to cost an average household of about $15.16 per year to do that.
I'm confused. Is it 1451? What is the new rate? It says 14.51.
14.51?
No.
Oh, that, okay, the new rate would be the 1427 to cover the costs.
That's the break even.
Right. An additional 24 cents then to come up to a new rate of $14.51.
Okay.
So, if you go down, there's increments of 50, of $25,000 to 50, then to 50, another 50 for 100, depending what you want that fund balance to do. This is just illustrating that how much additional you're going to have to charge per month to get that cushion.
But, then it grows. So, after five years, you'd have $500,000 in there?
After five years?
Let's say after five years.
Yeah.
Well...
Maybe I'm wrong. If I'm, if I am, let's talk about it.
Well, here are the, here are the scenarios. So, she laid out five kind of what ifs?
That's per year.
Right.
Right.
So, so the break even, it has to, the rate has to be 1427. Another, there's been a structural deficit. You said that. How, how long has that been the case for?
Well, the last time rates were increased were 2007 and...
We had that holiday where we didn't pay for two months.
Each cycle didn't pay for two months. That was $222,000.
Pardon? I see a difference of over $300,000 in '16. Was that what happened there?
It was $200,000. $200 for the holiday and about $70,000 was paid to take down the trees from the storm damage that went through.
But, that was the $2,000, $200,000. Holiday was kind of a, was kind of a election year bonus.
Yeah, here it is, here it is.
If you look at...
So, if I may, go back to this year, here was two, in 2016, we started the year with $540,000 and ended the year with $193.
Right.
Because we had two events, a holiday for paying and a weather event.
That was $347,000 deficit in 2016.
But, my point is if, if you set the rate so you have $100,000 per year, does that mean after five years, you anticipate $500,000 in fund balance? Or maybe I'm interpreting wrong?
No, I mean, the purpose is not to, to get it up to $500,000. It's to start building it up and then at the end of every year, kind of seeing where you are and if you...
It would, yes. That would add $100,000 a year.
So, then, what'll happen is if we don't, if you pick the wrong number, you end up with too big of a fund balance.
Correct. And you don't want too big of a fund.
And then, you'll... And then you'll want to reduce it and it becomes an administrative thing. So, okay, when you're done with your presentation, we can talk about it more, right?
But, you know, the point of it was to show how, how much we would need to kind of start establishing a fund balance again because having it at zero isn't.
So, so in 2016, we went from 541,000, 544.99 to 193,169. And that was a result of the, was it two months of?
Each cycle got two months.
Free coverage in election year and then how much?
A July storm.
How much did we pay, how much did we pay to Rizzo Waste in, in 2016?
About 69,000.
For the, for the storm cleanup?
About 69,000.
69,000. You know, that happened in other communities too and it was very shady. Well, we also did it last year on March 8th for $11,000. I believe it came in at nine. Nine, okay. We had a cap of 11, so. Yeah, I capped it at 11. So, when you're ready, we can talk about it.
And again, it was just, this was just a, I mean, we can do something where, you know, we increase it by five every, you know, I just threw this out there as an example. But the big, the big problem is there's, you know, a structural problem in the fund. You know, out of that 1427 of cost, 51 cents of it isn't being covered by any revenue whatsoever.
Well, I certainly don't want to get rid of the Household Hazardous Waste Day. And I think I know what Chuck's suggestion is going to be. No, I don't think you do yet. Maybe. I'm reading your mind. I have several. Well. All right, go for it. Guess. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read your mind, so, because it's live TV. Karnack or whatever. It's live, this is Johnny Carson time, so.
Live TV, you guys are good.
Uh, I think what Chuck is going to suggest, which I think is a good idea, is to try to get neighbors to buddy up. And if we're paying 35 bucks a car, I'm right. If we're paying 35 bucks a car, you can have, you can be bringing in, you know, a truckload of stuff. And your neighbor might just be bringing in a couple paint cans. So if you guys can buddy up, this would be a great, great HOA activity. And then you bring that car in that's fully loaded and you're paying 35 bucks. We're paying 35 bucks as opposed to multiple cars at 35 bucks. So we can use the E-News? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we also got.
Are we going?
Yeah. We also really need to communicate that because I, I believe, and as being a person that was collecting it and a person that brought stuff in, I'm not sure that I fully understood that it costs the township 40 bucks for me to bring in three half gallon.
Right. People don't realize that. So it's like, it's like with medical care, because you don't know the cost, you just do it. So.
Or when you're sick, is the other reason you get.
Are we going to send out a card this year, Patrick? We didn't last year as a savings, I don't know how much we saved, a couple thousand bucks, a reminder card.
Cindy, I don't believe that's in the budget.
No.
No, we weren't planning to, we didn't do it last year.
If you decide to change your mind, we need to put that note on. It's a great way to meet your neighbors. You can go over and say, hey, I'm here to pick up your trash. They'll love you. But the downside is that you will, if you put this on the website, you will get more people participating. Last year, we had a dip in the number of people because we didn't use the card. Well, I'm not sure there is a direct correlation, but. I think there is. There was a dip, I don't know if it was severe, but. So we have to think about that. And then the other thing is, we could, when we have a storm event, is people just will have to wait until the normal pickup happens. You don't have to have a special pickup.
But still, we have a structural deficit in that, that will help, but it will not eradicate.
We can address that in October or something like that, right? Or now, not today, but if we need to raise it to $14, we're going to do an even number, 1425, 1475. No odd numbers like 1451. So.
Would probably make sense to look at it the same time we're looking at reevaluating the water rates.
Yeah.
Which is, right, GLWA's new rates go into effect July 1st. We're going to have to determine if we need to raise rates at that point. Probably makes sense to look at the solid waste at the same time.
So we can certainly survive between now and then, right?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, we're good to the end of the year.
Yeah.
But we just have to start thinking about this and deciding what we want to do with some of these other services we provide.
So are you looking for any formal action from us tonight?
Just, I think, to accept the budget.
Now, we've never done that in the past, so is this just a symbolic pro forma thing? Well, we've approved solid waste budgets before. But is this really the budget we're approving? You want a resolution?
Is this, is this where you're saying we're going to end up at the end of the year for $2,900?
Correct.
If we leave nothing changed?
If nothing changes.
But, but this budget is underway right now. We're into the.
Right.
Fourth month of this budget.
Right.
Because typically, we do not approve these budgets, to your knowledge.
No. Well, at the end of December, we said we were going to do this in January. Because we didn't get to it by the end of the year.
Right.
And.
We had some delays.
Right. So.
Then, I mean, we could entertain a motion. I don't, I just don't think we need a resolution number attached to it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Cindy. Really good work.
Thank you, Cindy.
Any other questions, any questions from the public? Okay. Somebody want to fashion a motion?
I move to approve the proposed budget as presented for 2018 fiscal year for the solid waste services.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by trustee Kermy, seconded by clerk Vorva. Is that adequate to, Cindy, is that clear enough? Or is she gone? No. Is that what you, is that what you need?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. It was going to have immediate effect, but it's been in effect for four months anyway, so. All right, motion's been made by trustee Kermy, seconded by clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we're just flipping seven and eight, so we're moving down to the computer leasing agreement with Dell Financial Services. Treasurer Clinton?
Thank you. As we talked about during the budget cycle last year, we'd, we'd like to take a different approach on how we finance our computing equipment. Specifically, and you know, when, when we were looking at capital expenditures for last year, basically everybody raised their hand and said, we need a new computer. So what, what happens in that effect is that you have these huge peaks and valleys. Everybody buys a new computer and then eight years later, they need to buy another computer. So what was recommended is that we take a different philosophy when it comes to our computer equipment. Specifically, we lease it on a four-year cycle versus buying it and then running it into the ground. What that'll do for us are two things. Number one, it'll give us a more predictable spend. Every single year will be basically the same spend. And secondly, it'll keep us on a better refresh cycle when it comes to our equipment. So what I'm asking you approve today is the master lease agreement with Dell Computer. And, and after this master lease agreement is signed and approved, then we will attach schedules to it every year. The thought is, we will get roughly 40 new computers per year. Starting with this year, we'll, we'll put 40 on a lease and then we'll have this rolling every four years. We'll just refresh the ones that, that roll off of the schedule. So that's the, that's the request today is to approve the master lease agreement. We will have a schedule for the first 40 and that will result in about an $8,000 charge for leasing equipment versus a $28,000 charge for purchasing the equipment.
Say again? And we're going to.
If we lease, if we lease 40 computers, that will be an annual charge of $7,000 versus a $28,000 charge to purchase the equipment.
What is this for, in there, I'm confused, it says 4793 for 2018. Is that because we're not getting 40 in 2018?
It's not, it's not a full year. $7,000 would be a 12-month charge. This would be what it'll cost us through the rest of this calendar year.
So you will get 40 in a year span and then you'll go four years and then buy another 40?
We will go 40 every year. So we would, we would put these 40.
How many computers do we have?
We have roughly a 130, 140.
So every, every.
So every, every four years, you, you just keep a refi, a fresh cycle going. So every four years, so the oldest, so we don't have, we got 20-year-old computers in there.
But we're not a high-tech operation. Do we need, how much are we spending?
Yeah, we are high-tech.
We, I mean.
We're not doing product engineering.
Complaining about the website.
Yeah. We're live streaming.
Website is graphics.
Hi, everyone.
No, we're not doing high computer engineering, but the people that work in the township spend the majority of their day on computers. And when they're down and when they're slow, it impacts profitability.
So what's the cost versus the base? You always have to compare to the base. What you're doing today, how is this comparing cost of what we're going to do with this?
Hey, hey, Mark, how long does it take you to boot up your computer in the morning?
I can have two cups of coffee while the thing boots up in the morning. And I drink slow.
So comparison to what we have in, what do we have in the budget today? Will, is this more than what's in the budget?
Today, well, we approved the purchase of 40 computers for roughly $28,000. We will replace a capital purchase of $28,000 with a lease. Now, the impact for this year will be that roughly the $4,800 in lease payments.
So it's a savings for this year?
24,000.
Versus budget.
And Chuck, this is what, I mean, this is what pretty much standard practice in the private sector. So what happens is that rather than, you know, buying ad hoc when you, in the years that you happen to have the money, you're on a constant refresh cycle, right? It's, it's, everybody does it. And that way, you're, you know, you rest assured that your oldest technology is not more than four years old. And some companies will cascade. So, you know, your engineers always have the most current. But it's not necessarily really, it's not necessary in our operation, but it is, it is what everybody does. And then what happens at the end of the four years is the lease, the equipment still has residual value. So Dell is able to sell that. And frankly, a lot of it goes overseas.
I still am having a hard time understanding why we have to change out. I can tell you, smaller companies that are doing more technology than this company or this place are not changing out computers every four years.
I, I would find that hard to believe.
Well, I see it every day in the auto supply industry. They're not, they're not doing it.
But this just makes sense. We're talking.
Especially to somebody who's only doing Microsoft Word and Excel, you don't need a high-powered machine that's new every time. And we're also, everything that we're doing is going more online. Most of the building department is now online. We've got to have all of the new election clerks. So get them the new ones. Well, that's what we're doing. But the, the fire department doesn't need to have the latest and greatest for the employee's use. The firemen, firemen who are working in the field don't need the latest. They're out of the office. I mean, they're out, I'm trying to. We're not doing product engineering or software development or solid modeling or anything like that.
Decision. Either pay $28,000 for 40 computers and you're done. Or you get 160 computers for the exact same amount over a four-year period. So, I mean, we get three years free.
But, but you're not, it's not free. If you did it a different method, had a different cadence, or only certain people get the newest machine and then you cascade it, that may save some money. I, I just don't understand why we need those.
The lease, the lease does not tie you into, at the end of four years, you don't have to turn it back in and get a new one. You always have the option of extending the lease.
Yes.
Month to month. Or you have the option of, of buying out at the residual value, just like if you're releasing a car. But it gives you the flexibility and the predictable spend that we're looking for.
Mr. Supervisor, I, I would just like to say that, you know, this is an example of how this new board operates. You know, the first year, we had to tackle some really big issues. And now we're, we're getting into some of the nuts and bolts of how, how the operation goes. We have, because of the work that, that we've done, we've eliminated a lot of phone lines, saving, you know, thousands of dollars because we're looking into this type of detail. I want to thank the treasurer for his work on the, on the phone issues with me and also on the computer stuff. We have someone who has vast experience there. Also, Bob Dorchevitz, trustee Dorchevitz, has extensive, you know, IT background. And it's the collection of this group of people who are bringing to bear a lot of good real-world experience that are really saving money and making some good things happen. So I want, I want to thank the treasurer for his work and also trustee Dorchevitz for his work on this. And I think it's, I think it's a good thing.
Any other questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public? At this time, I'd like a mo, oh, ah, almost had it. Ooh. Careful, you're, it's live TV.
Yeah, right. Susan Bondi. Just one question. I, I see you went for Dell. Did you happen to, you know, put it out for contract with HP or bid or something?
We, we did not do a formal proposal or anything like that. We did, we did market pricing. We contacted people. We've been beating Dell up on pricing for a long time. We're, we're down to $660 per desktop.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a pretty good price.
Okay.
You're not buying any laptops?
The, the laptops will be purchased for the election requirements. But, but everything that sits in Township Hall would be a desktop.
So no employee has access to a laptop?
Um. I think, yeah, I think that's true.
DPW? That would be a functional, if you're looking for productivity. I think some of the. I'm asking the question of Patrick. Pat, don't you have some laptops in your shop?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because you're using them in the field.
Yeah, we need them in the field.
As part of the SAW grant, right?
Yes.
And so does the fire department, I believe.
We, we transitioned to iPads from $2,000 tough bucks to iPads over the last two years. So, and iPads costing us roughly $200 versus a $2,000 tough pad in the field. We have one training laptop.
Are you ready for a motion? Yeah.
Supervisor, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the computer leasing agreement with Dell Financial Services and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign all necessary agreements and certificates as required.
Thank you. Motion made by trustee Dorchevitz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hightman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty, thank you. Next up is the new item eight, Fire Pension Dispute Update. You may recall when we last met, which was a month ago, you would authorize me to enter into negotiations with the city and held, gave me the authority to implement the, the termination of the tolling agreement at my discretion. So since that time, I've had several meetings with Mayor Oliver. Most of these have been off-site, obviously. The attorneys have been looped in on most of our email discussions because it is attorney-client privileged information pursuant to. I don't remember my rules of evidence that well, Kevin, but it's MRE something. MRE 408, okay. So I just want to give you an update and, and a recommendation on where we are tonight. My last offer to Mayor Oliver was 1.3 million. As you may recall, the accountants for both the city and the township had agreed that the, the, the number, the best estimate number was 1.45. So I offered 1.3. I also am concerned that they adopt some kind of an acknowledgement agreement that any future MERS payments attributable to the city are paid by the city. The language of that is something that the lawyers would have to work out. And I, did Cindy leave? Okay. So this is something, Cindy, that if, if we believe that 1.45 is the, is the actual hardest number that we can, that we can come to, and now we have an offer on the table that goes below that, I worry about the difference between the 1.3 and the 1.45 because is that, is that money that would be, that could come back at a certain point? If there are future actuarial assumptions made by MERS, could we end up, and I'm really simplifying this, could we end up just getting a bill from MERS that's going to come to us saying, this is, this is your portion? us saying, this is, this is your portion of the, uh, this is the city's liability, and we expect Plymouth Township to pay for it? I want to make sure that the city pays for that, that this is the end of any, any future claims, again, it's lawyer work, but that any future liabilities that come from MERS, um, and if I'm overreacting, that's fine, but any future liabilities that come from MERS would have to be borne by the respective parties. We might get a bill too. I just want to make sure that, that they, the city, understand that fully, and that that would have to be part of any settlement agreement. They would also drop any other claims, such as the statute of limitations claims, the equipment claim, uh, there may have been another one out there that was thrown at us, um, so they would have to drop all of the claims. Mayor Oliver's latest counter, uh, last week was very interesting. It was eight hundred thou- that the city was offering eight hundred thousand dollars and their 2010 fire engine valued at around three hundred thousand for a total of one point one million. I asked Chief Phillips to investigate the fire engine status and maintenance records on whether this is a viable option. I believe you did go out and look at the engine. I mean, you kicked the tires, you got the Carfax, uh, what, what else did you get?
We looked at the engine. It appears to be well-maintained by the city. However, with that being said, the manufacturer, um, and their representative have not seen that vehicle since 2013. The city told me it had been maintained by, uh, another company, Apollo Fire. We, we do use those as well, uh, but they don't generally, uh, look after Pierce fire apparatus. The truck looked in good condition, had more miles on it than the city originally said, around thirteen thousand, um, but the truck appeared in excellent condition, um, with no damage. I would, um, I would like to have it, you know, taken to the manufacturer or their representative to verify that there's no, uh, severe problems with the truck, but on its face, the truck looked really good.
Was it bought as a demo or was it bought as a new?
It was bought as a demo in 2011 when they severed their agreement with us.
But, but, but that settlement would be, that, that's to fund a pension liability. So, we would basically be funding a fire truck with a pension liability.
I'm not saying I'm agreeing with this, so.
It was just an interesting counter.
It was an interesting counter, and we did do our due diligence to the extent that we have.
So, so who, um, sorry, can I ask some questions? So, the one point four five million, who, I, I haven't seen the details, but who did validate that number? How did, how did we come to that?
Well, it, the number was arrived at over many months of number crunching by Cindy Kushner from our staff, our accountant, um, Mark Christ- uh-
Kristin.
Mark Christensen, the accountant for the city. And then-
It was done in 2017 over a period of months.
Yeah, and then Mark Clinton has also been involved. I mean, I don't want to pin it all on him, but, you know, but Mark's, Mark has also reviewed the numbers as well.
And, and my question is, and nothing against Cindy, of course, uh, but we've had at least two sets of eyes look at the same numbers and come to the same conclusion.
No.
You mean within the township? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is, it is a year-by-year. It goes from the year 1995 all the way to the year 2032, and there's a dollar figure associated with each of those years. In the past years, what they have not paid us and what MERS is calculating in the future that they would pay us. Adding those two numbers together gives you the one point four five million.
I'm not particularly, uh, thrilled with the idea of settling it for less than that. However, if we were to do that, we would have to insist on, uh, payment immediately.
Well, whatever money we get from the city is essentially, and Mark, jump, Mark, jump in, Mark, is, I look at it as a pass-through. It's money that we then just, we pass on to MERS. We're not going to spend it on, you know, a, a new fire engine or-
Right, but they wouldn't-
Computers or anything.
We, we couldn't leave the door open to, you know, well, you know, we'll make payments. We'll pay a dollar a year for the next thirteen million years.
In terms of the city paying us an lump sum?
Yeah.
Well, I would certainly like to see that. There are issues, there are legal issues involving bonding. In, in essence, you cannot, you cannot go into debt to pay another debt.
Right.
Generally, there are a few, there's one exception.
Unless you're Wayne County.
In Oakland County, actually. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's a special law for them. But, if the, if, if the city agrees on a number, whether it's one point four five, one point three, one point one, uh, there is a possibility, I don't know this for sure, because this is, you know, they, they're not showing all their cards, but, but there is a legal fact that it, you cannot bond for another indebtedness. So, it may result in us going to court anyway to resolve the issue of how the city pays for the, um, the liability. In essence, then, we would, we would end up in Wayne County Circuit Court, and, and a judge would have to, uh, order the city to pay through a judgment.
And you could buy, they could bond for a judgment.
Yes.
Or have a millage.
They could tax, they could, they could, they could impose a, they could do a judgment levy if they wanted to.
But, you're right, Bob. My strong recommendation would be take every nickel of that payout and put it right into the MERS and chip away at that unfunded pension liability.
Right.
So, that's where time value of money makes sense. If you get it in a lump sum, and it immediately goes into MERS and begins accruing a benefit versus getting two hundred thousand a, a year for six years or something.
Correct. We would really like it in a lump sum, yeah. So, um, you've also received pursuant to, um, MRE five oh four? Five oh four or five oh eight?
What is it? I'm going to have to check that one.
All right, well, don't worry about it. But, uh, we, you've also received recommendations from Kevin Bennett, um, recommending in light of the, and, and remember, folks, that not only are we live tonight, but I can assure you that all the people at the city watch our meetings, um, on, on video, okay? So, they're going to, they're, they're, they watch every word.
Or.
So, um, it, it, we're, well, yeah, psychological warfare is what it is, really. We're, we're just trying to bore them into a settlement.
They're that starved for entertainment.
Yeah, so, hello, people from the city. In light of the cost of litigation and the viability of some of the city statute, the city may have some valid statute of limitations arguments. So, it's my understanding that Kevin Bennett has recommended a settlement number of one point one million, uh, in light of the cost of litigation, the viability of some of the city statute of limitations arguments. Bear in mind that litigation will cost us, I would say, at least two hundred thousand dollars, um, many years of, uh, depositions, motions, counter motions, um, not to mention the, uh, just having that, that thing hanging over all of us, even though we're going to continue working together on a lot of great projects. I mean, it's never good to have that, that cloud hanging over us. So, where we are in light of the discussions and our attorney's opinion, I am recommending settlement in the amount of one point one million and a MERS acknowledgement agreement from the city. I have, um, anyway, I, I, that's where I'm going to leave it. If, if you would give me the authority tonight, I would like to make that offer to the city. If they reject it, then I would like to terminate the, um, tolling agreement. Because I'm, I'm out of, uh-
Don't we normally talk about this as under, under pending litigation?
It's not pending litigation, though, so it's-
Uh, in closed session, so?
Well, it could be, it's difficult to do that under an attorney opinion letter, um, given the fact that we've, you know, disclosed many of the, um, numbers, you know, the numbers that we've already been talking about.
Quick question for the chief. Is this fire truck better than ones we've got today?
Anything's better.
Well, let's be realistic.
It's a lot newer than the trucks we have today. It's a fifteen-hundred gallon per minute pump, which is, that's the, uh, we have one truck with a fifteen-hundred gallon per minute pump, carries a thousand gallons of water. None of our trucks carry a thousand gallons of water. It appears to be very well-maintained. It's not optimum for how we operate, but it's not a bad truck. I mean, if we were to buy a truck, we would not spec a truck out that looks like this, but we can make this truck work.
It just, you're still, you're still taking money that normally would go into a pension fund and turning it into a asset that gets consumed.
I, I just don't like the barter aspect of the whole, of the whole transaction. I think we need-
But, we have a need.
Will they throw in us some, their empties too?
I don't, I don't know. We could look at annex, reverse annexation, perhaps.
I'm not prepared to agree, not tonight. So, I, it's a little disappointing, because we've been talking about this since 2014, and, um, for example, the equipment issue which came up again was settled two, two supervisors ago under Richard Rayoun. That's why we didn't talk about it for a long time. So, I, I don't know. I, I just have some concerns that we're shorting the money due, and then how do you, how would we track what is attributable to us or to the city if it comes later? For example, let's say you have five years in a row with, uh, negative stock market returns, and there's a special assessment or something like that, and they sent, do they send it in by name? They say, George Smith, you owe X thousand for that person? Is that the way it would work?
I think so, yeah.
So, you could easily trace it to what was the city portion, because that person was part of the, you'd have to go back to the original calculation of one point four five million and, and then plug in the numbers, the original spreadsheet?
Cindy, do you have a comment?
How you allocate it? I'm trying to understand the mechanics so that we don't agree to something and then have to negotiate how to figure that out five years from now or ten years from now.
Well, my understanding is whether it be the one point four five or the one point one or whatever the settlement, the board agrees to, I mean, that's going to be set up either as some kind of payment plan or the money given upfront. So, then, the second part of that is what Kurt, I believe, was alluding to. If there's some kind of issue within MERS, we pay for the people we have on our MERS program, and the city pays for the employees they have on MERS program. See, right now-
So, what is it that Kurt is talking about, then? If it's already divided?
We want an agreement that, that, that's the way it will be handed.
I, I want a universal settlement of all future claims. Like I said before, if I'm, if I'm overreacting, then fine, I'd rather overreact, but what I'm concerned about, I don't want us to get a bill eight years from now saying that this is for firefighter Jones who works for the city or worked for the city. I don't want to pay for it anymore. That's their responsibility.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a twenty-six percent reduction off of what we have agreed to.
I mean, the calculation of one point four five?
Yeah.
Twenty-six percent off that?
Twenty-six percent off for dodging your bill for years and years and years, and you get a twenty-six percent discount. That's just, that's just wrong.
Let's go back to this thing that Kurt's talking about. Maybe we need to consult a expert in pension, a pension attorney or something, uh, to understand that better. There are people that make a living off of that. You cannot guess on this. It's got to be a hundred percent right.
No, what are you trying to understand? It will never be a hundred percent right.
We, we, we-
No, a hundred percent right on how we would, if there is a specialist, an assessment five years from now, because the stock market went down five percent a year for five years in a row, and MERS, in order to make obligations, are asking for more contributions, and they're allowed to do that.
Right.
Is there, maybe there isn't a gray area. It's, George Smith is the responsibility of Plymouth Township, and-
That's what he wants to say in his agreement, that any MERS assessments that happen against the employees that are in our MERS program are the township's responsibilities. If the city's MERS, MERS pension plan, there's some issue with that, and they have another assessment or whatever happens, they're responsible for the amount that is applicable. I mean, the MERS would charge them, and, and their employees are already in that plan.
But, the employees, okay, the people who were the common employees of the Community Fire Department from nineteen ninety-five through 2011? Those, how do you, I don't understand the mechanics. Maybe you guys do, maybe it's obvious and I'm stupid, but I don't, I want to get it right.
Well, yeah, we, you know, you could come in and we could, we could show you how that's done, but I think Kurt's point is he's trying to prevent that, and that by saying that the employees that are on the city's MERS plan are the responsibility of the city, and the, the ones that are on the township plan are the responsibility of the township.
Right, okay, but community-
Two points, Chuck.
And then the, and then the, the ones that were jointly affected are covered by whatever the settlement number is.
So, that's all Plymouth Township under the community plan, under the Community Fire Department, former Community Fire Department employees? I, I'm asking what ifs. I don't know. That's what our job is as the Board of Directors, to get the right answers so that we make the right decisions.
The, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the MERS programs, the MERS plans have now been split up?
Yep, they've always been separate.
Okay, and, and so we have one that we're paying into for the firefighters that are on, or were on our payroll.
Correct.
And the city of Plymouth is now paying into the MERS plan for the, for the employees that were in, are on their payroll.
But, Mark, all of the Community Fire Department employees were on Plymouth Township's payroll?
Yeah, but they weren't in, they weren't in each other's plan. They stayed in separate plans.
What about, what about the people who were hired that, okay, they were, somebody was hired in 2000 as a new employee to the Plymouth Community Fire Department? Who?
That person then is on the township's, in the township's MERS plan.
Even though the city of Plymouth derived benefit from that person's employment?
Correct.
And I thought that was part of the calculation-
That is part of the, that's part of the one point four five.
No, you're exactly right. So, as part of the one point four five calculation, we each owed each other some money.
Right.
Right? We owed them for theirs, they owed us for ours. We netted those out to come up with the one point four five.
But, now there's a new assessment that comes five years from now for one of those employees. Do we net it out using the same method?
No.
No.
No. If that person is, if the assessment comes to the township, the township pays a hundred percent of the assessment. If the assessment comes to the city, the city pays a hundred percent of the assessment.
Okay, then it's a no-brainer to divide it up. It's easy then.
Is that, if that's your point, Kurt, right?
I just want a universal settlement of all claims so that we put an end to this, and we're not, people eight years from now are not revisiting this issue.
But, and, I totally agree with you, but going from one point four five to one point three is a gen, is a generous settlement off.
Well, but let's look at it-
Not one point three, one point one.
Now, to take it to one point one.
Yeah, well, let's look at it this way. You know, being a lawyer, you know that, how things end up in court. You know what the cost of litigation is. We've also been advised by our attorney that the city may have some legitimate statute of limitations issues, and even if they, um, prevail on some of them, you know, we're, we're still going to take the hit. If they, if they prevail on all of them, we take a hit. So, we're paying off, you know, part, part of the, it's, part of it's just good old-fashioned risk management. I mean, we're, we're, um, we're risk of, we're, we are avoiding a, a bigger risk down the road by agreeing to a settlement number that, um, by proposing a, a settlement number that we may end up with, we, we could, we could be in the same situation in court five years from now after blowing, you know, quarter million dollars.
Well, but they'd blow a quarter million dollars too.
Yeah, mutual assured destruction, I, I know.
And, uh, you know, to add to that, I think that, that, that it still leaves the question open. Now, then you have to go get a judgment in order to get, um, to get paid, because I just don't believe we'll get paid.
A lawsuit, a lawsuit in order to obtain a judgment is, um, is far more, uh, manageable than an open-ended lawsuit that's going to result in years of litigation, motions, depositions, possibly depositions with uncooperative witnesses? Bob?
I can probably name a few.
Yeah, uh, and-
You're saying if both sides agree?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, if, if both sides agree that this, if, if, if we can reach this agreement on the one point one million, we may still end up in court in order to resolve the judgment issue.
How they pay.
To how they pay.
Right.
Friendly.
To facilitate payment.
Yes.
So that they can show it to their bond counsel. So that they can show it to their bond counsel.
Right.
Or to their citizens that they have and they can pull a Wayne County like they did in, they put the $50 million on our tax bill all of a sudden in July 2015, was it?
That's correct.
The 13th check issue.
And I get what you're saying. I, I just think it's too low. I, I don't think we're asking enough.
I, I see the argument from, from both positions. With this new board coming on, we offered a olive leaf out there and I think it was accepted generally well. And then we got into, to where we did some number crunching and I think we came up with a, with a good plan on, on all that. I think the 1.45 is probably as close as you're going to get without going out and hiring other actuarial people here that you're going to spend a lot of money on.
Who didn't want to do it, by the way.
No, no, I'm good with, I'm...
And so, and so now, what we're doing now is really kind of a political decision. We got to say, here we have an opportunity to resolve this, to get it done. It'll be off the books. It may not be 100% of what we want. It may not be 100% of what they want, but we resolve the issue and then we get the agreement that Kurt is looking for to where we're held harmless in the future. And then we move forward in, in having good relations with the neighbor that we envelop. We're, we're the same Plymouth and for years there were fighting amongst the two groups for no real valid reason. And so I, I think that, I think this is, this is what we get hired for. We get hired for the, for the, the people put us on here to resolve these issues and I don't like giving up $200,000 or $300,000. But at the same time, to, we've got to make a decision here in the next month or less.
It's, but it works, it's a two-way street.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I won't have a good relationship with them if I felt that we've been taken advantage of that way. I won't.
I, I agree myself. And obviously, my reluctance to jump on the recreation plan is definitely tied to this dispute.
Wow.
It's just, there's just a point in time where you, you cut bait on this. You know, you got no one to hold them, no one to fold them. And this is one of those times where you go, you know, this is that kind of sandwich that none of us like to eat, that we, we may have to eat and it's a political decision. This is purely a political decision. The accountants have already done their job. They know it, we know it. Everyone knows that the number is probably as good as it's going to get without hiring a zillion-dollar actuaries. And now this is where we, this is where the rubber meets the road and we sit down and say, okay, we got to take a bite out of this sandwich. It's not tasteful, it's maybe not financially fair, but this is how you move forward in these type of decisions. And, and so, and, and everyone knows here that I lived in the city of Plymouth for, for 40 years and was a former city commissioner there and, and employee there. And I love the city of Plymouth. I'm not giving them anything here. They're going to have to go battle us on this if we don't do this and we've got to battle them. And, and it's just not the way to end this. The way to end this is for them to pay more than they want to pay because they want to give us some cash and a piece of equipment. And I, I just think this is how you get these things done. You go, okay, not fair 100%, but it gets the issue behind us and then we can move forward.
Are you proposing a counter of 1.1 million cash, no fire truck?
I would say yes. I want, I want the cash, I want it all upfront and I want to give, to authorize the supervisor to say, if you don't give us that, then we're going to go to dance. We're going to go to court and because our hands will be tied then. We've, we've given, you know, at the office. This is our office give and so don't come and ask me for anything more because we've been more than generous and, and let's get this done because there's no reason whatsoever that we're not working together with our closest neighbor or really any of the other neighbors that we have. And this whole problem was manufactured because of bad relations that were stupid. I'm sorry, the relationship was stupid. It, it shouldn't have happened that way. We still should have the same joint fire service going on and, because it was working. But that's the past. Now we have to get to the point to where we say, okay, let's get this done. And that's what we got hired for. And I'm willing to go on the record and say, listen, I don't think it's 100% fair, but I'm gonna, I'm going to take a bite out of that sandwich and take the, the political hit for it because that's what I got hired for.
So, okay. Kurt, would you, would you recommend a timeframe associated with the payment? You want a lump sum payment. Would you recommend a timeframe? Because my concern is that we go to this...
Friendly lawsuit thing?
To this friendly lawsuit thing that takes another two years.
I, I do not, I do not believe that a lawsuit would, to resolve the payment issue would take that long. I believe that my request would be that this 1.1 be paid before the end of this calendar year.
How, how about adding interest accrual?
Bob, we've gone down that road and it has been completely...
But that's part of the deal. If you're, if you're...
Well, that's a killer. It's a deal killer.
No, he's talking about once you have an agreement.
Let me finish, please. If you, I'm not yelling at you, but if you truly intend to pay me, then you would have no problem tacking interest on from the date of the settlement. From the date of the settlement, so, because that's the time value of money to us. If you truly intended to pay me, you would have no problem tacking on interest from the date of the settlement. You wouldn't.
No, I agree. And that's...
I don't have a problem with that.
I, yeah, really, I'm, because that's, if we end up in court, I think on the judgment levy, and I'm kind of, I'm really looking at Kevin now, I mean, I think on the judgment levy issue, I would hope that that could be resolved quickly as long as the parties stipulate to the amount in controversy or the settlement amount. So to answer Bob's question, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're coming up with. It's sort of a belt and suspenders approach because if this moves quickly, and it's certainly an incentive to move it quickly, then I would expect that the court would resolve this before, before the end of the year.
It's conceivably it could happen like that. I did talk with Attorney Marzano today a little bit about the logistics of this, were the city and the township to come to a, to a settlement. Nothing in detail with respect to the interest issue. I will say that the amended agreement did not contain a provision for interest, but if the, if the township gets a judgment against the city, then there is something called post-judgment interest that will accrue. So to the extent that the city does not pay after the judgment is entered, interest will accrue.
Right. And what I was suggesting, if you want to make a lower settlement offer, tie that in there. Add that in there. Say, look, it's 1.1 million plus you agree from the date of settlement to pay interest. So if you drag it out for three years, you know, you're, you're paying.
I'm fine with that. And again, we're assuming a worst-case scenario that they, that they don't have the money. I mean, there, there's a lot of bluffing, you know, that they, they may be doing some bluffing. We know they have a fire engine that they think is worth $300,000. Maybe they could sell it, you know?
I'd like to add something to what Trustee Dorsey said.
On Craigslist.
If the post-judgment interest would go back to the date of the filing of the complaint, not the date of the judgment.
Well, there's a, in all likelihood, even if things go well, we won't receive the money for one year from now. And that means also you've lost one year of accrual in MERS from the deposit. And that one year can be equal to 8% or 6%, something like that, depending on how the stock market goes. So there needs to be a lot of pressure to pay up early. Waiting a year minimum, in my opinion, is too long.
Well, if they have to, if we have to go to court on the judgment issue, I mean, the court's going to set their own schedule. We can't, we can, we can only nudge them for so much. But again, we're assuming that, that the city does not have the money and we would like the whole, the whole amount in total.
I'm very disappointed in the city. I ran with the idea that we were going to have, as Jerry said, joint, good communications. I think the numbers they've given us back so far are a joke and I'd rather just take them to court and get, get our money, but...
Gary?
I, I know, I...
I love you and I know, I know, I know how you feel, okay? And that's how you're going to feel in a settlement conference in front of a judge five years from now and it's going to be the crap sandwich that Jerry had referred to.
I know.
I've, I have, I'm, I'm a lawyer, I have settled cases, I've been part of settlements in the millions of dollars and you, you, you feel like garbage when it's over with.
Yeah. I, and, and I, I'll be honest, it may reflect my future votes on working directly with the city. And, and, you know, I think I can live with 1-1 if we put the interest in there. As, as you mentioned, if we can go back and say, all right, you know, let's go and if they don't go with 1-1, we sue the hell out of them and get our money back.
You mean cash offer?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want their truck.
All right. And I've, I've talked with Jack Dempsey about this, but I don't want to, I don't want, I, I believe that that's, should be off the record.
Sorry?
Jack Dempsey, who could not be here tonight. I mean, he, he, he's aware of, you know, this.
Do you want to propose, do we want a resolution? Do we want a...
Some people want to say something. I think I see somebody raising their hand.
Bill Carter? Come on up.
Nice to see you guys.
Join the fun. Don't forget, we're live.
Good to see you guys here. God, it's, it's difficult to sit back here. I don't know which one's working. This working?
Yes.
You know, we've been kicking this can all over hell and back. And we keep kicking. We got to make a decision. We've got to come to an agreement. And you know what? This is one community. We need to look at it as one community. It's okay to be disappointed with the city, but we got to come to look at it as a community and put, put away those kinds of feelings. We got to take what's on the table. I'm for Kurt saying, I would say, let Kurt negotiate this thing. Let's get it done. If we can get 1.1 million with the, with the fire truck as part of it, get it done. We, we postpone this hundreds of thousands of dollars down the road and we're not going to get any more down the road. Listen, everybody's hurting for money. The township's hurting for money, the county's hurting for money, the city's hurting for money. Let's take what we can get, move forward. Let's move, let's just move forward with this. Let's, let's put it to bed. Let's get it done.
But that means that we as citizens in Plymouth Township will end up paying more for pension benefits.
If we do, we do, but let's, we're going to pay in the end if we don't settle. We're going to pay more. I think Kurt is right. We'll pay more if we, we delay this, take them to court and it's going to be years down the road before we settle. You know what? You know, who wants to be talking about this 10 years from now? I'm serious. We got to do something about this. Let's get it done so we can move on with other projects with this city and come together. Please.
Okay.
Make a decision to do the right thing here. Get it over with. Thank you.
All right.
I have to comment. I, I, I agree on getting it done, but I also have, has anyone proposed to the city just what this is doing? Not just to your, basically, what do I want to call it? You know, essentially working with the city of Plymouth, but the residents. I, as a resident, am annoyed and angry that we pay the majority of the library. We would love to get involved with them on the authority with Park, but who do you think is going to want to, from the township, get involved again with the city when they have basically stuck it to us on this fire agreement? And I do think it's going to affect the way people look at Park, unfortunately.
I, I will tell you that there are members of the city commission right now who think that this offer will stick it to them, okay? And there, there is going to be people on their commission who think that 800,000 is the real number, okay? But I do agree that this does, it places a cloud over our community that does impact other, other good cooperative, money-saving things that we need to be doing. Park is one of them. Don Soonan's here tonight and I, we have, both of us, both the mayor of Plymouth and I have both told him that, you know, we got to resolve this. It's not an if, come, but it's like, you know, it's hard to come to treaties, you know, when you're, when you're at war someplace else in the world, you know? And that's, that's not helpful.
So the 1.45, was it 1.45? The 1.45 number, the city does not agree that that's a legitimate number? Is that what you're saying?
We believe that that is a legitimate number. However, it has been watered down by the possibility of legitimate arguments that the city has regarding statute of limitations.
Yeah, but you know that's BS.
Well, our attorney...
It may be legally...
But our, our attorney disagrees with that.
It's a BS way to govern. And we all know that. Come on.
It's money owed and using a loophole to get out of paying it. You're right.
It's using the legal system to weasely a lot of pain.
And all of that stuff's going to come up in court and as our attorney has pointed out, there are, there may be legitimate issues about that. I'd rather, I'd rather employ risk management to mitigate that now than, than suffer worse consequences in court.
It's cheese ball.
Is cheese ball a legal term?
Cheese ball. It's Latin. It's Latin.
Bob, so the 1.45 number, if you factor in the statute of limitations, if we assume that their argument is correct, that number goes from 1.45 to 1.07, okay? So that's, that's the range we're dealing with here.
Sandy?
Sandy, I stand before you not as the deputy clerk, as a township president and as a person who lived the negotiations on the fire contract. So please look at me that way as I speak to you. My husband negotiated the merger contract. There is not another person sitting in this room or watching TV likely who was involved in those negotiations.
So I was there.
You were not sitting in on the day-to-day negotiations, Mr. Kermy.
So it's Chuck's fault?
So...
We approved it. All right.
You approved it. I'm talking about the day-to-day come-home. What did you talk about today? We talked about who would be the fire chief. We talked about what formula we would use for expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. The fact is, the two fire departments were put together to benefit this community, Plymouth Township and Plymouth City. Nobody was interested in what the politicians thought. They were interested in what was best for the community. It is the politicians who screwed it up. Cindy Kushner and Mark Christensen worked together to come up with a resolution in terms of dollars because the politicians screwed it up. They came up with a number and the politicians screwed it up again. They came up with a number and the politicians screwed it up again. Let's negotiate. Let's do time value of money. Let's do interest. Let's talk about statute of limitations. If there's ever going to be any hope that we are going to be a community, we've got to stop with the politics and start talking about what we need to do to work together, live together and do things the right way. I say, settle for 1.1 and let's move forward together, please.
Yeah, but I, I got to say something though because, sorry. You know, we on this board, we have a fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of this community to, to get the money that our taxpayers are entitled to. We have a duty and we have to uphold that duty.
Bob, I agree with you and let me just say this. It is our elected officials that the people in this room kept in office for a very long time who obligated the city to a pension plan with legacy costs that the city did not want. So if you want to be fair, look at that too.
Okay. Oops, all right. My mic is off. All right. Anybody else from the audience? All right. Where do we want to proceed? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to, to make a motion. I move that the township board authorize the township supervisor to make a final settlement offer with the city of Plymouth for 1.1 million dollars to settle the pension dispute with the addition that once the settlement agreement is made and the judgment is entered, that interest will accrue on that amount until such time that the town, that the city pays. And that if the township, that the city does not agree that... that interest will accrue on that amount until such time that the town, that the city pays. And that if the township, that the city does not agree, that we further give authorization for, for you to proceed with, for the township board to proceed with a lawsuit.
Don't you want to be more specific? Say lump sum payment of 1.1?
I'll take that as a friendly amendment, a lump sum, and then to settle the pension dispute with the city, and that once the judgment is entered, that interest accrues.
But how do you know you're gonna need a judgment? Why don't we just get it?
No, no, not when judgment, uh, no, 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 interest accrues from settlement.
Kevin?
The mechanics of this are somewhat difficult. I hesitate to say that the city and the township should enter into an official settlement agreement prior to filing lawsuit. I'm gonna have to think about, about that process, but it could create the appearance of bad faith on part of both the township and the city if they enter into a settlement agreement prior to filing a lawsuit. Or, I'll give it some thought.
Want to keep it real simple and just say that we would offer 1.1 million to settle? And then to see what their, see what their reaction is? If they say, "Go, go away," then I'm authorized to terminate the tolling agreement.
You gotta use the words "cash" and "lump sum."
Lump sum?
Without some penalty, they're, they're not gonna pay.
Well, we're making, we're making a big assumption there, so.
Well.
I mean, if we end up in court on the, if we end up in court on the judgment levy issue, then, then the normal procedures will apply. I'm just looking for, I'm really looking for guidance right now on what you would like me to offer. What I'm hearing is 1.1 million, lump sum, take it or leave it. If we agree, if they agree to the 1.1, then we authorize the, what do we do with, Kevin, then? Do we authorize the attorneys to work out the details, or what?
That's why we'd have to have a closed session.
There is no lawsuit.
There's no lawsuit.
Well, he said that maybe, what do you mean, there will be a friendly lawsuit, or whatever you call it.
You can't, it's, it has to be specific pending litigation to go into closed session.
Can we add a time that says after they get the offer that, you got a week? And then we terminate tolling and the clock starts and we sue, you know?
Well, when is their recreation director left? But they're meeting again on April 2nd. So we need an answer by April 3rd, April 5th, one week.
It's less than a week, April 2nd.
Yeah, that's when they meet again. They can have this same discussion.
That we're having.
That we're having.
Only because Bill Carter's a wonderful guy. I'll go along with that, 1-1 with a week, to say, let's get this done. I'm, I'm just still very frustrated and disappointed.
We got it. So, you want to revise your motion, Mr. Clerk?
I move that we authorize the township supervisor to offer a final settlement with the city for 1.1 million dollar lump sum settlement for the pension dispute. And that the city has until April the 3rd to respond.
If they agree, then it's, we don't have to have it in the motion, but if they agree, then it goes on to the, the attorneys then work out the details.
Then in the next meeting, we can have direction.
Yeah.
It should also be included in the motion that if the deal is not done, then the supervisor has authority to terminate the tolling agreement, because the last motion terminated, I think, today.
Yes.
Okay. In addition, that if the city does not respond, then we authorize the township supervisor to cancel the tolling agreement.
Terminate.
Terminate tolling.
You want to take another shot at reading that out loud?
Yep. I move that we authorize the township supervisor to offer a final settlement with the city of Plymouth for 1.1 million dollar lump sum settlement for the pension dispute, and that they have until April the 3rd to respond. If not, the township supervisor is authorized to terminate the tolling agreement.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there support?
Second.
Seconded by Treasurer Clinton. So, Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Farber, yes. Trustee Kermy?
No.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
No.
Trustee Hyman?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, number nine is Plymouth Arts and Recreation Complex Authority Update and Discussion. And we also met a couple of weeks ago with Mayor Oliver, Don Sunin, Mark Malcolm, and Attorney Craig Hammond from Dickinson Wright. We reviewed in detail the PARA, P-A-R-A, which would be the Plymouth Arts and Recreation Authority documents that were submitted by Don Sunin to the board back in January. You all have copies. Those items have still not changed as of today. Both Mayor Oliver and I expressed concerns with the concept in the following areas. It's not exhaustive of our concerns, but these are the initial issues raised at the meeting. I'm sure there will be more. Number one, is this the right enabling statute to be using for this project? There are, there are a couple of different state laws dealing with recreation authorities. This is one that is, that may be too limiting, because it's, it is project-specific. It is site-specific. Should we go that route, or could we go with a broader recreation authority that would cover the four corners of the two communities? Why do we need an appointed board of directors? Wouldn't an elected board be better and more democratic? Number three, what if Park does not succeed or fails to uphold their commitments? What if Park is taken over by people who don't have a good business model? People who are maybe more artsy than, than business-oriented, and they fail at running the facility properly? Can we fire them? What is the role of the authority once it's created? Can it be amended or expanded? Does this effectively stop the future creation of a broader community-wide recreation authority? Who actually asks for the millage, the city or the township or the authority? And who will really own the facilities once they are completed? While I can't answer all of these items in order, the theme of the meeting that I gathered from Mr. Sunin and Mr. Malcolm is that they're willing to accommodate our concerns in any way possible, primarily through a term, like a term sheet, or through amending the authorities, the proposed authorities enabling documents with Park. Basically, what we were told by the attorney is the authority is more like a DDA or a Tifa district, in that it would be a creation of the communities and can be amended and modified or discontinued by the communities at any time upon mutual agreement of the city and the township. It is not an authority like the library district. It's not like the library district that is wholly independent of the communities it serves. It serves at our pleasure. While the current proposed enabling language is based on a state statute that was created for a site-specific project, I presume the DeVos Center in Grand Rapids, which was also, I believe, a public-private partnership. We were told by the attorney from Dickinson Wright that we could modify it over time to encompass more projects and make it more of a community-wide recreation authority. Extra funding for these additional projects outside of the theater would have to stay under one mil and would require a separate vote of the people. That way, we would prevent the mission creep scenario that I know Chuck had mentioned before. We went through many diff, I could, I could continue going through my notes here, but we are continuing to have discussions. I would like to take the authority document and continue to tweak that based on the, the feedback that I've received from, from all of you. I'd also really like to start digging into the term sheet, basically laying out our demands, if you will, of what this new authority would look like and what our relationship would be with Park, who would be managing and running the facilities. So, I guess my next move is I'm gonna just keep talking and share with you the information that I get from, from Park as it becomes available. I'd also like to start working on this term sheet. They've given us a draft already, and then we can start moving on that and amending that document as well. That would just be coming from the township's perspective. Obviously, we gotta get the city's involvement, and, you know, I don't want to reopen that door again, but this is where, you know, I agree with you, Gary, no, don't do that. I just agree with you that, you know, it'd be great if we could get this thing off the table and, and move forward without that cloud hanging over us. And I'm saying the same thing to you, Don Sunin, as well, because, you know, you may need to be engaging in shuttle diplomacy here and trying to get the city to agree to this thing so we can put this behind us. But, anyway, we are, we're gonna continue to meet on this. As far as the, as far as some of the next steps, I guess I'm really looking for questions that you might have for me and any other ideas. I would like to, and Chuck, you had mentioned you might be out of town, but April 24th?
That's MTA. That's why I would be out of town.
Are you going to MTA, Chuck?
Considering it. Depends on what kind of vote we have here. I won't be going if there's a critical vote.
I wouldn't be looking at, I doubt we would be voting on anything on April 24th. We don't have anything else pressing that night, and it'd be nice just to set aside the entire evening to have a more in-depth park discussion, so.
We're gonna discuss a little bit tonight?
A little bit, yeah.
Alright, I have a couple of things. One is, Jerry, the dates for drop dead for the August election to get something on the ballot and November.
Yeah, they would have to have the wording into the county by May 1st, and then again at the end, at July.
May 1st and July 1?
Yep.
For November?
For November. Because they'd have to go, they would have to go, once the, once they offer the wording in, it would have to be approved, so there's an approval period of a couple of weeks.
Alright, so May 1 is completely infeasible.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah, I think so. It's only a month away.
Yeah.
Couple of other comments is, the authority, I want to be as restrictive as possible, and I want the board to be appointed by the city and the township, not elected, where they can become an animal of their own. And if it's like a DDA, that makes sense. The township board controls who's elected. And like I've said before, we've had some board, I know it's democracy or whatever, but.
You're assuming we can't make that same animal happen if we, we do that versus election.
Yeah, I disagree. I disagree for a couple of reasons. It become, then it becomes subject to the whim of the board, so.
Like DDA.
Like DDA, but DDA is probably a little less, what's the right word? I can't find the word I'm looking for.
Controversial.
A little, a little less subject to the change, oh, a change in the winds of the political climate.
Well, the other, the other extreme is the library, which doesn't answer to anybody, essentially. People get voted in, but we don't pay attention, people don't pay attention.
You use that as lessons learned, so maybe you have a pro-rata, or, you know, the township has X numbers. I mean, there's a lot of ways the lawyers can slice us, but I fundamentally do not like the idea that, basically, that would be at the whim of whoever the current supervisor is.
I like the, well, I like that idea. I like the idea, it's a diabolical plot.
You could get hit by the lottery bus tomorrow.
There you go.
Than the supervisor.
The, the hybrid that I, I'm intrigued by would be an appointed board that would later transition into an elected board, which, again, the Park attorney says that we can do. That could be staggered over years, and it could also be structured so that if we had a, we could elect four people from the township and three from the city. Unlike the library district, where it's at large, and it's at large.
A question. Can we ask the voters to actually approve the authority? So if they don't approve the authority, then all bets are off.
Well, that's, that's what I think the right, if there's somehow we can figure that, I mean, they would approve the taxing. I think we need to be clear that, not we, I'll speak for myself. My view is, let the voters decide.
Here's, here's how that would work. We would, we would authorize the creation of the authority under the state statute. We would appoint members to this authority board. The authority board, once it's created, would then go to Wayne County and request a millage. They would have to set the millage amount. They would have to set, they would have to determine the language with Wayne County. We are not a party to that, just like we're not with Schoolcraft, or the school districts, or the library board, or anybody. Then, if the millage fails in November, we would then dissolve the board. We would dissolve the authority. That's the attraction for me about having an appointed board, and at least in the early stages, because I don't want to be, we don't want to be having people running for office in November for an authority that's not going to exist and has no money. So if the, if the voters knock down the millage in November, then I would say the whole thing dies, and basically, the, the authority is disbanded and the members that we appointed are now unappointed.
What if, what if a millage passed in one community but not the other?
It has to be both. That's part of the state law. So it's like the regional transit authority in that respect.
So you, there's no standing to have the voters approve the authority? Because what, what we're starting here is, you said they set the millage. That's scary to me, even though it has a one mil cap allegedly. I don't want a bunch of newly-appointed people setting millage for vote.
No, no, they set the, they set the millage and then the voters have to approve.
Right. What if they put two mils on there?
No, they're gonna, well, they can't. They can only go up to a mil. Nobody at Park has asked for a mil. It's ranged anywhere from 0.6 to 0.75, or some of the numbers I've heard. But the board, the, the authority board would, would agree to that number and, and place it on the ballot in November.
The way I'm interpreting this, Chuck, is that we, the board of Plymouth Township, would approve the creation of a new authority. That authority immediately would do three things. Number one, approve the bylaws. Number two, approve a concession agreement with the Park management team. And number three, would approve a millage. That would all take place in the first couple of months.
Mark, let me just clarify what you said, just so people don't get confused. The authority wouldn't approve the millage. The authority would approve the.
Millage's language.
The millage to be placed on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah, let's be clear on that.
Thanks for the clarification. So, to me, it, I mean, to me, by us approving the authority, we are in effect approving the concession agreement, the bylaws, and the placement of the tax on the, the millage on the ballot in November.
That's why I want the more democratic approach and let the voters decide whether they want an authority and a millage.
But what is, what would be the difference between approving an authority and approving a millage?
Quite a bit, because if the voters say, "We don't want this separate organization," then we're already at arm's length when we appro, we appoint people that are going to be working with attorneys, and in many cases, they may be totally unfamiliar with taxation and laws, and, you know, you get,
Here's why I.
You get what you get, then. You have no control.
Here's why I don't like that approach. When somebody sees on a ballot, "Do you want to approve an authority?" I'm not really sure they know what they're voting for. If somebody says, "Would you approve a one mil tax increase over 20 years?" They know what they're asking. They know what they're being asked for.
You're assuming that the people don't, won't be able to figure out, or we can't educate them of what an authority is? Really? I thought we're highly educated above average. We're all above average in Plymouth Township, in the city of Plymouth.
I'm not. Also, I mean, nothing, nothing prevents Park from going out and getting petitions signed in the city and getting petitions signed in the township, and bringing them to us and saying, "Look, here's how much support I have." That would be helpful in making.
That's a Democratic vote.
Yeah, so if they say, "Okay, I got 1,000 signatures in the city of Plymouth, 2,000 signatures from the people in the, in the township. This shows that there's support for this, so." this shows that there's support for this, so do it. That would be one way of showing the kind of support that you're talking about, is asking for the.
That's very grassroots support.
Yes.
We're doing it for.
I'm not sure what binding effect that would have or anything, but.
No, it'd have no binding effect, but it would demonstrate to the board that what they're saying is that there really is some support for this. And then therefore, we would be at liberty then to say, well, then let's approve this board. And then they could ask for a millage, and then you have that second kind of shot at it, but.
Now, that takes us well into 2019.
I'm just, Chuck was asking, how do you approve a board? And that's one way, is they can overtly demonstrate the desire, and that would, I'm not saying for us to hang our hat on it, but it would show that the, that there's actual desire for something like this, and then we could, we could move forward. I mean, I personally like to see that.
There's a tendency, okay, if we do it like what's proposed, you can sit back and say, well, if, if things go bad, you say, well, it's not my fault. We, these people are elected. So I still think that we need to maintain more control than an at-large or even a allocated elected board.
And I think that.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't seen good luck with authorities in many areas. They become kind of their own animal, and they move forward and do their own thing depending. Things can change in 10 years or 20 years. You could get a group of people that control things, and you'll never wrestle it back.
Well, let me, let me just recap, because under the, if, if we're going to use this particular state law, I don't believe that the state law provides for the authority to be created by popular vote, okay? The timeline and the path that, the way I understand it is, we create the authority. That's a vote that we have to take. We then appoint four members to the authority board. City appoints three. They then meet, they're, they become a governmental entity at that point, okay? So they, they have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. They're a, they're a governmental unit. For the time period, let's say we approve this in May. So those guys are now a legitimate governmental entity for the next, well, they are, so they would then.
The millage is approved.
They would then, yeah, we're getting there. So what they do is they approve the millage language, they approve a millage amount. They take that to the county, the county puts that on the ballot in November. The way I look at it, I'm trying to combine the best of both worlds. I think the voters are sophisticated enough to know that when this shows up on the ballot, that you're, you're approving, whether it's .6 or .75 mills for this project. We've all run elections. We know what's going to happen, that, that, that this is going to be a referendum on, on the authority, on Park, on the millage, on the whole wad. And if, and if the voters shoot it down, I think it's dead, okay?
I agree.
And I think Sunin thinks it's dead. I think they're going to walk away, and then, you know, that's, it'll be the city's problem really at that point. But if it, if it passes, then they will have the money that they need to implement the project. At that point, over a period of years, then I think we should look at an elected board. But seriously, if you want to keep it, you know, appointed, that's fine with me, too.
Yeah, so, so I guess philosophically, you know, my preference is for, for the township to not have any more entanglements than are absolutely unnecessary. But it, it does, it does.
So you're saying relinquish control and be arm's length, saying, oh, that's, that's the PARC, or PRIRA, whatever they are, board?
I mean, I.
Not my problem?
Well, I guess I gotta chew on that point, because just as a matter of kind of, I guess, I guess as a matter of, what's the word I'm looking for? It's getting late. You know, the, the theory is that, do we really want to be in that business of oversight of such a, such a facility?
I don't. I don't. I, I want this, I don't want to have the employees, I don't want the overhead, I don't want the responsibility. I, I, so, that's my two cents.
So, so does it, I mean, how entangled does the township become at that point? If the voters, and I, and I guess something, we just gotta, you know, we gotta just kind of think about it from that perspective. And think about it, and think, we also, I, I like to think about it in terms of, you know, you go into these things always expecting the best, but think about it in terms of what if the worst happens? It's like, let's take fire as an example. Nobody went into that relationship, because that contract was really poorly written. And nobody ever went into that relationship thinking, what happens if we separate? Right? So you've got to think about this in terms of the worst-case scenarios. What if, what if the management group running it can't, can't, can't pay their bills? What happens? Right? What if, you know, you know, the what-ifs? What if there's seven new people sitting up here some, someday, and they all want to dissolve the authority? Then what happens?
I agree, Bob. I think that's, the feedback that I've received from citizens, phone calls, emails, et cetera, that seems to be the number-one concern, is the what-ifs. Right? What if they go into the ceiling and they find asbestos through the entire place? Or what if we build a, a theater and nobody comes? Right? And then, and that's the concern. Is the township on the hook? Or more importantly, I guess, are the taxpayers on the hook for those additional costs? That's, that's the feedback I'm receiving the most.
You guys keep kicking around this four and three on the board here. Based on library, based on the amount of millage that would be coming from the township, how come it's not five and two? Five and two, five from the township and two from the city?
Just to put a different view on it, the, a big part of our tax base is commercial and industrial. Maybe a better way to look at it would be the number of households, residential houses, and comparing those two. But I think you're right. In terms of tax dollars, yeah, we've probably got three out of four, I'm sorry.
Seventy-five percent of the library.
Seventy-five percent of the tax dollars, but remember, a big chunk of that comes from businesses.
So, you know, seventy-five percent of seven people is at least five.
What is the number of homes in the city, do you know?
I think that's on cost of.
About 3,300, I think.
Three to one?
Yeah. Although they're building them bigger now, so.
Well, let's, this is helpful. I mean, again, we're not deciding on anything tonight, but I do appreciate the.
Well, Kurt, you say, how do we go forward? And I mean, it's hard to, to make these types of decisions in chunks. So you mentioned that there would be almost like a term sheet or a frequently asked questions. My recommendation would be that we put that online, we, you know, for, so we can all have access to it. You keep us, every time a discussion or a decision makes place, update those, those terms, those frequently asked questions. If we have concerns about the direction it's going, we can provide that feedback.
We just have to be careful. Again, Open Meetings Act, you know, we don't want to be doing group discussions, so. And I'm sure that most of what we do is going to be FOIA'd. It's, you know, that pattern has already begun, so, you know, just bear that in mind. Okay. Good enough for now? Chuck, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Pardon me? All set? Oh, yeah, any public comment on this item?
My name is Ann LaFond, and I live at 13009 Portsmouth Crossing. I've been a resident of Plymouth Township for 35 years. Followed the politics, followed things up and down, been an active member of the community. I want everybody to look back to the election. There was a lot of work in the election to get it so we would get you people here, and so that you would work together with the city of Town, the city of Plymouth and Plymouth Township, because many, many of us believe it's one community. And we are Plymouth outsiders, believe it's one community, so we want to preserve that. I, and I applaud you for your talking things over and working towards that. I do want to say about that settlement, just get it done. All of us in the township just want it done and off of our heads so we can move forward. What I like to move forward with and express my support of is Park. Many of us also were pushing for Park when we voted for many of you here that ran last time. So not only do we want to change and transparency and working together with the city of Plymouth, we also were in favor of Park. There's lots of logistics that you're working out today, and you'll be working out for months, but we don't want to just think of the, what if this wrong thing happened? Because you also have to think about what if all the positives we project happen to our community. And recreation is a very important part of life. Even if you never go to Park, whether you go as a little child, you go as a senior, even if you never set foot in there, the fact that you own property in the city of Plymouth or Plymouth Township, you're going to benefit, because people want to move to a community that thinks of recreation and Park as part of your lifestyle. So there are many, many of us that are interested in Park and have been before and during the election, so.
Thank you.
I certainly don't want to get into a debate for all the questions you raised tonight, but obviously, we're always available to address those things. And we've had a lot of discussion with this over the course of the last year or two. And there are answers to all of those things. Several other communities have done this. There's models out there where it's done. We ought to look at how that's been done as well. But really, what I want to address tonight more than anything, just very briefly, these robo calls. I mean, this is crazy stuff. I mean, the, some of the claims in this latest one, they're getting worse every time, too, so I'm not sure quite what's going on there. But all the misinformation that came out in these last ones, you know, I don't mind information going out there that's based on facts. There's certainly plenty of questions regarding the project that people could have legitimate concerns on. But to say that Park is going to be the cause of the entire arts and rec and PDW departments being voted on tonight to be donated to the city and this kind of stuff, I mean, that's a bunch of nonsense. Also, that the idea that the authority would have unlimited taxing ability. Well, those that are doing robo calls know full well that's not true. You've mentioned a couple of times tonight, it's got a one mil maximum on it. We've said we'd never need more than 3/4 of a mil, and that number's probably going to come down. So that's just, just not true, and they know that. It's not a $30 million theater. It's a $30 million project. And it certainly is not my theater. So this idea that this one's Sunin's theater, that's just totally untrue. I don't mind working on the project and the like, but the community doesn't like, want it, we won't have any of it. The $30 million, just so everyone understands, 7, 8 million of that is for infrastructure. Buy the property, do all the utilities, the parking lot, stormwater runoff, lighting, all the things that you need to do to the site. You've got landscaping and entrances and exits and like, that's 7.8 million. The school renovation itself is another 7, 8 million dollars. The school, as it stands, is not viable. That project, if it doesn't get funded, will disappear. No ifs, ands, or buts about. And if we don't need the existing swimming pool, the gymnasiums, the football stadiums, all of the, the property that's there, if it goes down, that will without a doubt be gone. That facility, anybody, I'll give you a tour and show you what it takes to keep that place going every single day. That's not an option. The theater itself will be 13 to 14 million dollars. We've got hard quotes, we've got good numbers, and because we already have the land, the property, and a lot of the infrastructure will already be there. It's a 20, 25 million dollar theater, but we can do it for 13, 14 million dollars, because we already have the property, it's already there, and it would be there regardless. So clearly, those that are doing a robo call here are making a very, very deliberate attempt to mislead the public on this project. And for those of, that are behind that and the other opposition campaign, you know, just stop the nonsense. Stop the misinformation, stop all the scare tactics. Satisfy ourselves that all the legitimate questions that were raised here tonight get satisfied, but stop all the crazy stuff that's going on. It was kind of interesting tonight when you were talking about the trash millage. We're talking about building the theater, doing the school, doing the entire project for one, less than half of what we pay for our trash collection. So I'll just leave you with that. Thanks.
Thank you. You realize that you're exposing our diabolical plan, though, Don? I mean, the robo calls are, you know, they're, they're exposing the diabolical plan.
There's something wrong at my house because I never got a robo call. I am not wanted, apparently. I also have something called No More Robo. You might try that. My point of view as far as Park is concerned has nothing to do with taxes or money or anything else. I'm a member of, love Plymouth Township, but I also love Plymouth. I'm a member of this community. And at Park, I can have a taste of the DIA. I can have a taste of Center for Creative Studies if some kids want to go there. I can have a taste of Little Theater, and I have tasted it. Got, taken there kicking and screaming once and had the best time. It's refreshing to see the members of your community, the whole community, doing something wonderful in a facility that's available to all of us. And how we get there is your problem, but I hope we get there. Because there's, in our own township, we don't have a lot of the arts. I wish we did, we don't. We have an art association that's over there, and I go there, but I can't think of the name. But we don't have a taste of the DIA. We don't have Center for Creative Studies classes in a local facility. I went to that school, and I'm thrilled to death that that opportunity is going to be there for our kids. I mean, the, the opportunities at Park aren't available anywhere else in the Plymouth community. So think about that before you want to kill it. Think about that.
Susan Bondi, Plymouth Township. I, I want to see Park have an, an opportunity. And I think we have to set the authority, and I don't think we can put that to a vote, or we definitely are going to put this down the road another two years. We have to give it, the voters, a chance. And the only way they can have a chance to vote is if we build an authority. And I want all of us to think of what a legacy this leaves. As, as the lady mentioned, we may all sample different things at Park. Maybe we only attend one or two events. Okay. But what a legacy we leave the entire, our kids and whatever, if we, if we put Park and actually make it work. And then think of the alternative. If we don't make it work, what do you have there? A strip mall and a bunch of houses or condos? What do you want?
Bill Carter, Township. Again, I echo what Susan said, what this lovely lady said, this other lady that said, that got up first. Everything they said, I agree with. The lady that got up first talked about, let's not look at the negatives, the possibilities, this going wrong or that going wrong. Let's just look at the solutions. Don Sunin, when he presented to us a month or so ago, that the, his, his view, and the commitments he already has, as far as folks that are already paying rent in that facility, it's paying for itself today. That theater will pay for itself, as Don pointed out, with minimal numbers of performances. It's, it's not going to fail. This community needs something like this. It will be a success. We just need to come together as a community, put, put whatever, however you want to put the board together, four, three, five, two, put it together, have it be appointed, appointed by the two, the city and the township. Get that done. You'll have representatives from each, each community to look out for each community's interest, you know, be it the city or the township. But it, it needs to be done. We need to have this. The legacy comments that Susan talks about and this lady talks about, I'm 78 years old, I'll be.
I'll be 79 in not very, you know, not very long. What have I got, another decade here? And I too want this for my grandchildren and their children and their grandchildren. We've got an opportunity here to show the nation how a community really comes together to make things better for all. Please do it. Thank you.
You have two decades to worry about.
Good evening. My name's Sheila Payton. I've lived here for 16 years. We moved here from Cleveland. And we moved to Plymouth Township specifically because of the proximity to the city and all of the wonderful things that the city has to offer and the, and the beautiful green space that Plymouth Township has. And I can tell you that when we moved here, we had no idea there was a city and a township. We just knew that we liked the area quite a bit. And so what I would encourage you to do is to recognize there are a lot of people that live in Plymouth Township that don't appreciate that there is this division. And I, I also would encourage you to, I've been on a board before and understand that there's almost always more than one side to a story, and, and usually, there's two or three sides. And my guess is on this fire pension issue, there's many sides to the story, and I would encourage you to keep an open mind about that. And I have no idea what the sides are. I just know that there are more sides.
Thank you. Anybody else? And remember, we're not voting on Park, the future of Park, or anything like that tonight, but we do appreciate your comments.
I will not be brief because everybody else was so articulate. I, I just want to say that Park is such a breakthrough.
And your name is?
What's that?
Your name.
Oh, Judy Mardigan, Long Term Plymouth Township President. I just want to say that when I look at Park, I think, what a breakthrough. It took a treasured community resource. We did not want to give it up. And it's being used for recreation, for the arts, and for general enrichment. When you go into Park, it's just amazing. You see people of all ages, right? You see little kids doing theater and swimming. You see high school and middle school kids learning how to be in band improv classes. They're out on the sports fields. You have senior citizens playing pickleball and swimming and, and going to who knows what. Even if you just, like you said, you said it so well, if you just sample one thing. We just did a, our, our corporate event, our winter party was at Park, and we played pickleball. Our staff of millennials, they had a great time, and we had a lunch at the Simple Kitchen. It was wonderful. My husband has taken classical guitar lessons for two years there. I don't know why he, it's great he's doing it. But that, the point is that there's something there for everybody, and it's, and it's such, it's a breakthrough. I mean, communities around the country are looking at Park, trying to figure out, how can we, you know, replicate this? It didn't, it, it made money, I mean, it had a positive cash flow the first month they opened. The model is sound. And I just think, like, like what Sheila said, we are one community. I, when I go out into the world, I say, I'm from Plymouth, and so I know it's, you've had battle scars, I get it, I've, I've been there, on, you know, working with the city, but it's kind, this is a, this is a point of pride that we can come together. We are one community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Wydell, Plymouth Township resident, 12 years. And I do agree with a lot of the points being made that we do need to be one community, but there's priorities for funding. And within our community, a project that asks for, or is, is $30 million, like the park, where they have $6 million in pledges, which are not actual funds in hand, but pledges, and now they're requesting $24 million in tax assessments from both the city and the township, of which, you know, about 75% is the township, so close to $20 million. This is more than what we owe for the Plymouth fire debt right now, which we need to resolve because as of the last meeting, there was a lot of information presented that we are going to have issues with our credit as a township if we don't catch up on our, on our bills for our retirement funds. So activities at the park are not free. Everyone has to pay to participate, even after the township would be sending them close to this $20 million. We would have no piece of the property or assets after sending this $20 million. It's just, it's theirs. It's a huge expense for not being able to own things like land, ballfields, exercise equipment, walking paths, pavilions, or even a public golf course. Township residents' tax payments would also be used to subsidize the profits of the companies that currently rent and operate their businesses there, as we would be paying for the buildings' improvements and the parking lots and, and the utilities that service them. It's mentioned at last meeting and at this meeting that there's needs for arts for kids, arts programs, dance, theater, you know, creative writing or creative drawing and painting, and I, I agree with that. But if we're to reach everybody in the community and give everyone an equal chance, we need to do this through the schools and, and have the art programs in the schools strengthened. Because not everybody can afford to send their kids to an art class or a theater class. And this would be a more equal opportunity for all children in our community. The, if you look at close to $20 million needed and a .75 mil tax increase, it amounts to about the same amount of money as the township gets for a yearly operation mill. For my particular house, it's over $3,000 over 20 years. And that's what this mill is asking for, 20 years at .75, which is a total of 15 mils. This is not a small chunk of change on your tax bill. And I, I think there's a few other things to consider. The Canton Cherry Hill Theater, it was mentioned at previous meeting, it's losing close to half a million dollars a year. And the Canton residents are having to pay for this. We can't predict the future. We can say, we can say...
Letter, letter talk.
We can say that, you know, we have all these models, we have these predictions, but we cannot say for sure that this will not be a losing endeavor, just like Canton Cherry Hill Theater is. The 20, $20 million could be, go a long ways for roads and other infrastructure in the township that are critically failing, especially in subdivisions. My own subdivision, we had to pay a $4,500 assessment per house to get our roads repaired. And this was after only 15 years of them after being laid. So in another 15 years, we'll probably end up having another tax assessment for this. So we're, we're at, we're looking at a lot of things in the township for improvement. What about our roads and our infrastructure?
Okay. Knocking off.
And we would never get the money from Wayne County. And then if, if this needs to be a business savvy board for the project to be successful, why is it a locally government-funded project? Why is government involved in what needs to be something that's profitable or break even in the end? And, and why would we have no property rights to it after, after putting in this much money? And I think, among other things among, in the township, we also need to be concerned and plan for close to 600 new homes being constructed at the corner of Ann Arbor Road and Napier in Salem Township. Salem Township has lower taxes than Plymouth Township. And these new residents will overcrowd and overcome our Plymouth schools, sending, possibly setting our property values down if this is not properly planned for. Will we need to have a new tax assessment to build a new school or funding for adding on to our current schools because of all these new people moving in to the, the school district? And then how many more taxes can we keep on adding before people find better value And, and I got one question. I know, I know last meeting, there was conflict of interest mentioned from some of the board. And just to be, I was just curious, I know trustee Dorsevitz has mentioned that he was previously on the park board, and I thought that in, in previous conversations with the PRC that I've received communication from your, your wife, Tammy, who works there?
No, she doesn't.
Okay.
She, she did work there for a while, and she made less than minimum wage. So... She doesn't work there anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
So, in all, though...
Left, what, about a year ago, Don? Close to a year ago? Yeah. And I resigned, I resigned off the board in June of 2016, so it's, I've been gone almost two years.
Okay. I, I did receive correspondence from her in 2017, so...
I think it was about a year, May or so, maybe she left. It's been about, yeah, yeah.
But I think overall, you know, it is a great project, but if it, if it's, you know, community-supported, let's, let's all sit down and write a check for it now. Let, let's, let's not do the, the tax payments, the assessments and all that. Let's, let's all sit down and write a check for it now so we can go.
Okay.
And, and not force people who don't want, you know, and can't afford to incur the, the tax payments for a project that we really won't have any property value or property interest or, or assets from.
Okay. Thank you.
So my name is Isene Coleman. I live in the township. I've lived here for 54 years. And my whole, I, this is the first time I've heard about it. I've been getting robocalls. So I'm like, what is this all about? So I'll go find out. But you are our representatives. You represent us. So do the people want it? That's the first question. And that has to be answered honestly. Do they want it? What's entailed? How much cost? Honestly. So that they can make an informed decision. That's all I'm going to say.
Do you want it?
I'm not sure. I don't have enough information.
Okay. Well, and that's what we're, and that's why we're here.
I'm just gathering right now, but...
And that's why we're here.
...robocalls about this and that.
Well, we'll talk about that shortly, but let me, let me just tell you, that's why we're here. That's why we're having this discussion out in the open. That's why...
Even the finances, what's involved?
That's fine. Okay, hold on. That's why we're here. That's why we're having these discussions. And it doesn't end tonight, despite what the robocalls have to say. And, okay, there's going to be a lot of decisions made before this thing ever hits the ballot, if it ever hits the ballot.
Hi, everyone. My name is Walt Coleman. I probably don't need this thing. I've been here since I was three years old. I remember Cressy's uptown. I also remember my dad taking me to Norman's while my mom went to the nerve of Dunnings. I remember a lot. I have seen Plymouth, Plymouth Township grow all these years. I lived in the first, no, the third house that was built in Lake Point Village. My dad came out of Detroit right before the riots and built the home there. I've watched Plymouth grow. I've watched the educational park grow before it was even there. I went to middle school at Central. I watched Plymouth grow. We didn't need to have a board put in to make Plymouth into what it is now. We didn't need to have a standalone authority put in place to decide taxes to make Plymouth like Royal Oak, Northville, wherever. I watched Plymouth grow by itself. I am not for this, as you might know. I don't want any authority coming here and saying that we need money from you to build what we think Plymouth needs. Plymouth can make Plymouth grow. I've watched Plymouth grow. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other comments tonight? Excellent. Thank you. Let's move on. Supervisor and trustee comments. Just got a few things I want to mention tonight. I just want to make it clear, because it's come up a few times tonight, that Plymouth Township does not create or promote robocalls. Robocalls are a tool that is used by politicians and political campaigns. And last time I checked, we're not in a political campaign right now in Plymouth Township. If some folks want to, want a political campaign, we certainly know how to, how to respond. If Mr. Soonan's park project or the park project is on the ballot this year, there will certainly be a political campaign, and we can see, already see how those lines are going to be drawn. And that's good. That's healthy. That's the democratic process. What is detrimental to that process is those in our community who will deliberately mislead, slander, and attack individuals based on their motives, and in, in some cases, even their, their backgrounds and their, and their personal lives. So if you're here tonight because we were told by a robocall that we're going to raise your taxes, you've been lied to. If you're here tonight because we, you were told we were voting to sell the golf course, which is the robocall that you get on the every other Monday nights, you were being lied to. If you're here tonight because we were told we're going to vote tonight on some massive tax increase, a diabolical plot, I believe it was called, between me and Don Soonan, you're being lied to. Or if you're here tonight because we're disbanding the senior bus service, you're being lied to. The township board and I pride ourselves on transparency. You deserve nothing less. We promised to turn around Plymouth Township, and we are. We don't need robocalls to tell you what we're up to. Our meetings are posted, and everyone is invited to attend and participate. We have a Citizens Advisory Council. We are always looking for citizen input. We do not want to be going back to the bad old days where this board was creating amphitheaters in people's backyards without their knowledge or consent and getting the money for it from Wayne County. Tonight even marks the first live broadcast of a, of a township board meeting. Hopefully, the thing is still working up there. If you have questions about anything, call us, email us. You email me, I respond personally. If my name is on that email, I respond it. And you're going to get them at weird hours of the day, too, because I've always got this thing on, you know? My wife hates it, but whatever. We're live. And, you know, it doesn't apply to me. If you call any, call or email any of the other gentlemen up here. Those responsible for the robocalls know that they're lying. They want to scare you. They think you're gullible, that they can scare you into coming to a meeting because the sky is falling. And it's not. It speaks volumes about their character and their sense of community. I'm not sure who's responsible for the robocalls. I have some ideas, because there's patterns that emerge, patterns in speech, patterns in writing. The robocalls always come from the same locations, the same guys who did it to me two years ago. Okay? I, I hope, you know, Easter is coming, Passover is coming. I hope that maybe during this holiday season, that they will find some closure and get on with their lives, because we all deserve better. If we're going to be one community, we need to start acting like it and set, set down our weapons, okay? And, and try to do what's best for everybody. Thank you. All right, Bob? Update on the Golf Course Committee. So I think since the last time I updated you, we've had two meetings. We, for those of you that have come out and spoken at the Golf Course Committee meetings, thank you very, very much, because this is what I love about our community, is that people are engaged. So we've had, we've had some really, really, really good dialogue. The, the committee itself is, is, you know, very talented individuals, so in the last meeting...
meeting, we had two agenda items. We had, we had a gentleman named Paul Albanese, who is a, a leading expert in the design of golf courses, and he came, and he really talked about, you know, the art of possible, not so much about what you ought to do, but, you know, what kinds of things you can think about, and, and where the dialogue kind of shifted. Let me circle back, sorry. So we had him was one agenda item, and the second was Cindy Kushner, who you heard from earlier tonight, came and answered financial questions. So there were a lot of new faces at the last meeting. I, I think there's been a lot of community effort to get people to come out and participate in the process, which has been great. Lot of new faces, people came. We had to, you, you kind of had to give people, you know, I wanted to give everyone that was there the opportunity to speak, which we did successfully. So some people came there based on misinformation, and when the meeting started, they sort of had this suspicion about what was going to happen. By the end of the meeting, it, it was a hundred and eighty degrees. I mean, people were coming up to the committee afterwards, thanking us for our participation, thanking us for this open dialogue. But what we came to is that we're getting to the point where we're going to try to draw at least some preliminary closure to it and come back to the Board of Trustees with, with findings. One of the things that was really interesting was, was the, how the dialogue shifted from, you know, this focus, you know, we do have a short-term focus on, on, on the financial impact. Golf course is losing money, there are people, including two, one of our committee members and plus another gentleman in the office who have run golf courses or own them, who, who believe that it could be viable, and maybe there could be some partial repurposing to it, for example, and maybe, maybe with some redesign, it could be a nine-hole executive course, and other things could happen with it. So, but there are people that are experts in this field, that believe that it could be viable. So it's that, kind of that art of possible, you know, what do you want it to look, what, what is the vision in twenty years, and then how do you work backwards from that and make it viable, is where the dialogue went. So expect to see some good things, and again, I mean, we, we have had just wonderful, absolutely wonderful participation from the community, and for those of you out there that may have done things to encourage people to attend, thank you, because you, you brought, you brought great, great, great comments to the, to the party.
As long as they're accurate though, right, Bob?
Doesn't matter.
By the end of it, those people that showed up and were suspicious, by the end of that meeting, they were, they were turned around, because they saw the transparency, you know?
Yeah.
They saw the way that we handled it.
The truth, yeah.
Yeah, they saw, yeah.
Well, thank you, I want to thank you for your basically volunteering for that, and Jack in absentia, and, you know, the other thing too, is we've got just regular private civilians who have come forward, they're, they're not getting paid, they're not, you know, they, these are people who are volunteering of their time and talent to serve on the Golf Course Committee. We've got some really cool people. I think you, you want to add somebody? Is that something else?
So there was a gentleman, there, there are, so quickly, including in the committee, committee is, there's one, one guy who has ran golf courses before, and then in the audience there was a, a gentleman who has owned two golf courses, and he said, and I forget which ones, but you, you knew them, Mark, right?
Yeah, Ann Arbor, Stonehenge, and then, oh, what was the second one? It was the one in Brighton. The one in Brighton.
Yeah.
Something Oaks, I can't remember.
Yeah.
But, no, I agree, I mean, you've got some pretty sharp cookies on that committee who really understand the business of golf.
Yeah, that, right, and, and are heavily vested in the, in the community as well. So I will say one thing, and this is my observation, if there is anyone in Plymouth Township that thinks that we should sell that golf course and turn it into housing, I haven't met that person, if you know that person. I haven't met him. So, let's just, you know, let's just be clear on that.
Gary.
We got the best damn people, you know? For those of you that know me, you know, and, and see me go through this, you know, I love this, I love this township, I'm doing it because I want to, right? Not because I have to, not because I'm a politician, okay? Thank you to all the new people, I hope you come back. I really, really hope you come back. I don't care how, why you came here tonight at all, what lie you were told. Once again though, I will get back on my soapbox, the cowards for the robo calls that spread the lies, I mean, for those of you that got the Christmas one, I ruined your Christmas. So, I mean, that was the first one. So after that, this has become very personal for me. I mean, you lost the Dogon election, get, get over it, be done, let us move on, because Dogon, we got a great place to live, and we're going to make it even better. Thank you.
Please top that, Morba.
I'm good.
Mark Clinton.
I'm, I'm good as well, thank you.
Chuck Kermy. Awesome, thank you, sir. Let's see, where are we? More public comments and questions? Have we? I think we've all set our piece here tonight. Thank you, thank you all for coming. We now have to go into a closed session. It is, according to my clock, it is ten sixteen. So I need a motion?
I move we go into closed session?
I move, we need to-
Well, you have to read it, read it out.
I move that we go to a closed session to be called in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, Section 8H, for the purpose of evaluating and discussing an attorney opinion letter relative to options and legal issues regarding the sale of the DPW.
Support. All those with favor signify by saying aye.
You got to do a roll call vote. You got to do a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Sorry, don't go away.
Trustee, trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Ising.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Hyman, yes. Dorchevitz?
Yeah, we are.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank, well, thank you.